Thank you. Everyone can please put their cell phones on silent. If you have to take a call, please step out. If the cellphone rings, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. I want to welcome you to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 22, 2021. If everyone kindly please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. If you remain standing, please, for our moment of silence. Thank you. Everyone may be seated. I've never done this before, but it seems like the polite thing to do. Can everyone hear me in the back?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. At this time, council, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda? If there's no additions or deletions to the agenda, I will need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. Morse has made the motion. By show of hands, all in favor. Let the record show, that was a unanimous. Agenda passes. That brings us to our presentations. And our first presentation, sorry, I can't hear myself in the, our first presentation goes for, these are related to the Fourth of July Parade coming up on Saturday, July 3rd. Our mayor for the day, Mr. Galix. Just wanted to present you. And I'll read it. I'm going to read this first for July 4th, for, or July 3rd, Saturday, July 3rd. Whereas Joe Galix came to the attention of the mayor of Indian Trail after the mayor was tagged on his Facebook page with over 1,000 posts, all about Joel Galix and his top-notch customer service. Whereas Joel Galix, who is a longtime employee of Walmart in Indian Trail, North Carolina, received a Service Award earlier this year from the town of Indian Trail in recognition of his commitment to his job and customers. Whereas Joel Galix has come to be known for his positive can-do attitude and his helpful and friendly demeanor because he can be found most often working diligently, stocking shelves, collecting carts, helping load cars in the parking lot, and happily greeting Walmart customers and guests. Whereas Joel Galix is honored by the, is honored by the town of Indian Trail in his appointment as honorary mayor for the day for July 3rd, 2021, and will accompany Mayor Michael L. Alvarez in the Indian Trail July 4th Parade. And now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim Joel Galix honorary mayor for the day, July 3rd, 2021. Joel. Stand up, sir. Be recognized. I want everyone in here that has not met Joel, which probably most of you have because they shop at Walmart, that this man right here exemplifies what each of us should strive to be in life. And that is a kind, understanding, listening soul to everyone else, willing to help everyone they meet in their life. Joel, thank you for raising the bar in Indian Trail. I also want Joel. I want to give you a special little token in addition to your thing, if you come up here for a second. Considering you are the most popular person in Indian Trail. So, yeah, just don't run against me. I would like to give you a special token from the town, and symbolically, I'd like to award you with the key to the city. Do you want to say something for one real quick? If you're speechless, you're speechless, but by all means. Joel, the floor is yours, sir.
I would like to thank my parents and Walmart's support and everyone involved with me being here.
Okay, well, just make sure you get enough sleep the night before because if somebody asks me a question, I'm diverting it to you. I know you're here, Grace. I can, I can see your forehead. And next would be our grand marshal, Grace Laney. Todd, did you want to read this since you're some woman? Okay. Gracie, stand up. Come on up. You can stand there, you can come up here, it doesn't matter. Grace Laney was selected by the Indian Trails Lions Club as our grand marshal for this year's Fourth of July Parade. If any of you have met her before, forgive me if I missed something. Grace has done the Adopt a Cop program, correct? And which provided items and lunches for every deputy in Union County, correct?
Yes.
You've done the Bright Blessings?
Yes, sir.
And you've done, you're working on a blessing box?
Yes.
You have made pillows for the animal shelter. You create stuffed animals for kids at the cancer center. You travel around the world in beauty pageants representing Indian Trail.
Yes.
You drive me crazy.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And it just, the list goes on and on and on for her volunteer service and the ideas she comes up with to help her community, law enforcement, public servants, first responders, children, people with illnesses. It just goes on and on and on. And Grace, you want to tell everyone how old you are?
I'm 15.
And you started all this when?
I'm sorry?
How, what age were you when you started all this?
12, maybe?
It makes some of us look down on ourselves, saying, wow, she's really another one raising the bar for the future. So when you want to think about the future and where we're going, just take a look at Grace and notice that it's in good hands. There's good leaders out there and there's, they're raising the bar where it needs to be raised. So, on that being said, whereas Grace Laney, age 15, is a rising freshman at Porter Ridge Middle School, whereas Grace Laney has been diligent in her thoughtful, considerate, and abundant service to this and other communities in need. Whereas Grace Laney received the 2019, 2020 Gold Presidential Awards, which require over 250 hours of community service. Whereas Grace Laney began her labor of love after receiving a sewing machine for Christmas one year whereby she then designed and created over 500 pillows and donated them to animal shelters in North and South Carolina and Florida. Whereas Grace Laney continues to provide in comfort to others. To date, she has created Fitness Friday, a YouTube, YouTube program to keep people active while at home during a pandemic, raised money for comfort cases to benefit foster children in their daily journeys, created a program via social, social media called Stuffed with Love, where she stuffed goodie bags for St. Jude and Bright Blessings, made more than 1,000 masks for key service personnel during the pandemic, and has brought to fruition through her tenacity and genuine care for others, a blessing box, which will provide free food and other essentials, items to the Indian Trail community. Whereas Grace Laney is honored by the town of Indian Trail in her appointment as grand marshal and will lead the Indian Trail July 4th Parade. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Grace Laney the grand marshal for the July 4th, 2021 Parade. Good job. Now we have new business, Scooter's Coffee, are you here?
I am here.
Oh, there you are, you're hiding.
No, I wasn't hiding, I was in the front row.
Well, I couldn't see you, so you were hiding.
I feel, um...
Oh, she called me out on that one.
I'm humbled by being a part of this presentation with the people that have come before me. My name is Mary Schroder.
If you want to take the microphone and give us a minute or two about the business.
Uh, thank you. My name is Mary Schroder. I'm the owner of Scooter's Coffee here in Indian Trail. I'm so blessed to be a part of this presentation, all the wonderful people that came before me. I'm a little humbled by the service. I am proud to be a member of the Indian Trail community. We opened on June 7th of this year. We're across from the Heritage Teeter Distribution Center. Scooter's Coffee is a franchise. It was developed Dawn and Linda Euchels in 1998 in Omaha, Nebraska. And since that 23 years, we have created over 350 locations across the country. We, my husband and I also own a location in Monroe. We're the first two Scooter's Coffee franchises in North Carolina. And we service with both stores over 800 cars a day. So we're doing really well. We're happy to be a part of the community. We focus on customer service. I hire for customer service. I hire for baristas that understand the need for great customer service. I hire amazing customers because we're going to provide amazing coffee amazingly fast. And I will teach them how to serve those amazing drinks. We're always looking for new baristas, so if anyone's interested in looking for a job, I think everybody's hiring right now. Again, we're located at 5859 West Highway 74. We do have an app, so on the packet that I gave you, I was a copy of the menu, and we have an app so you can look at all of our menu items, our options on the app. And then we also have a loyalty program like other businesses that have the app, so you can, with your purchases, receive points and then get, you can get free drinks, free food for those points. Questions for me?
Yeah, when are you open?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Hours.
Oh, we're open from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. In the coffee business, it's a morning business, so we're bright and ready to go at 5:00 AM. On Saturdays and Sundays, we open at 6:00, and we close at 8:00 on Sundays, but we're closed at 9:00 on Saturdays, and that's year-round. So, thank you. I'm happy to be a part of the community, and we have been so well-received. I appreciate all the support on there. Thank you.
I'd like to present you a token on behalf of the town council and town of Indian Trail. Welcome.
Great.
I wish you many years of blessings and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I see you, Claire. Come on up with mom. All right. We know you don't want to get any closer to me. All right. An Indian Trail proclamation for Cecile Parent. Whereas Cecile Parent, in 1944, when she was 10 years old, watched her uncle patrol the streets during World War II in what was called blackout times to ensure everyone was protected and following safety guidelines. Whereas these observations left a lifelong impact on young Cecile, impressing upon her that civil responsibilities can never be underappreciated and that, in fact, civil service is the highest duty one can accomplish. Whereas after receiving a master's degree in education, she taught civics for 30 years, and during that time, through the creation of a government club, helped students learn about their own civil responsibilities, which resulted in developing both local and state leaders in Connecticut where she taught. Whereas Cecile Parent has instilled her passion into her children and grandchildren, three generations to volunteer and serve those less fortunate and in need. Whereas Cecile Parent now has the privilege of watching her children and grandchildren work annually with Cindy's Hope Chest to make life a little better for families struggling with a mother who has cancer by providing Christmas gifts to their children through a program entitled Abby's Angels and Joe's Jolly Elves. And there, now for, therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, do hereby recognize and honor Cecile Parent for her dedication to serving others over a lifetime and instilling the passion and tradition in her children and grandchildren, duly adopted this 22nd day of June 2021. And you will be riding with me during the parade, and we will, in honor of you, this July 4th, July 4th will be Cecile Parent Day here in the town of Indian Trail. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your teaching service. Thank you for all you have taught your children and your grandchildren. I might take the grandchildren one back since they hounded me during Christmas time to help them with Joe's Jolly Elves and Abby's Angels, but passing the, the thought in your heart for serving others is a trade long that we're losing, and thank you for keeping it alive and all you've done. And come on up and somebody, Grace, you want to help her? If all of you haven't noticed, that's probably one of the best parts of the job, being able to bring forth and recognize those that have given back to the community and hopefully just by bringing them up here, it can pay it forward to others to help their community because we're only, we're only as good as the weakest link in our community, and we need to keep strengthening them. And I appreciate each and every person that's come up and for it all being brought to my attention. Now we have an update on the American Rescue Funds. Mr. Wodowicz, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. What a great start to the meeting. I hope we can keep the momentum going. It's really been very impressive so far. So welcome. Good to be back. Basically, we wanted to give a brief update on the American Rescue Plan Act. This comes to us from the United States Treasury. We watched a seminar last Wednesday, and basically, the deputy treasurer said this is a once-in-a-generation, she's been in the business for over 35 years, it's a once-in-a-generation funding. We have an internal team, Mike, myself, our engineer, Todd, and Alicia Gaddy, we've been working, studying, trying to figure out all the particulars. Nothing official yet, but we're anticipating $11 million. We were notified on Wednesday that some of the municipalities have turned back, they're not interested, so they're recalculating, which I thought was kind of interesting. The deputy treasurer also informed that they're going to be looking for elected officials to be working with the stakeholders. I gave everyone a hard copy, it was under your water. Basically, we came up with a couple of concepts so far, certainly want your input to the left, Mayor. I'll just go over a couple of brief, quick ones. Assist residents, businesses that have been negatively affected by COVID-19. Work with neighboring communities. We can work with Union County for infrastructure, water, sewer. Assist non-for-profits that were overly taxed during the pandemic, and I know there's a lot of them out there in Indian Trail. We helped a couple with the CARE Acts. Assist folks getting back to work. We can pay for childcare, educational expenses. Mike, do you want to add anything?
Not really, just a couple of things to bear in mind. This is a moving target of money, and so we don't, while we're putting together an internal team, once we identify the concept, we will bring it back to the board for feedback and agreement of this is how much money we want to allocate. We will probably be working with the COG to assist us. They helped us under the CARES Act, did a good job with that. We have received notification today that apparently the money will not be here before July 1st, so it'll be sometime after July 1st, and as we develop the concept, we will report back to you regularly.
We look forward to it. We'll keep you abreast.
Thank you, Jim. No, just looking, making sure I got the right sheet. Okay, that brings us to public comments. At this time, I'll open the public comments, and as everyone could see, there's no one that's signed up. There's no been emails for general public comments. Abby? Okay, so I will close the general public comments at this time as well, and we'll move on to our law enforcement update. Captain James and your fancy badge.
I told somebody I've had this thing a year and a half, first time I've worn it, or had the opportunity to wear, or remember to wear. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I don't have anything for you tonight as far as presentation goes, but I'd be glad to answer any questions if you've got something specific that you'd like for me to answer.
Anyone?
I just want to say thanks to Animal Services. My wife got a kitten, so she's pretty happy about that.
I'm glad she was pleased with it.
She's very pleased with it, so, you know, it was male, was going to name it Little Captain James, but, you know, it's kind of being a female, so. But anyway, but anyway, just, I think everybody ought to, if you look at the adoption, they got a Facebook page and all that, so it's, I think it's a great thing.
Yes, sir, thank you for plugging that.
I appreciate it. Tell them thank you for me.
I don't need any more cats, thank you. But it's, it is a great thing. Okay. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. If there's no concerns about the consent agenda or questions, I'll need a motion to approve, please. Mr. Head's made a motion to approve the consent agenda. By show of hands, all in favor. Let the record show that that was passed unanimously. That brings us to public hearing from McLendon Place rezoning request ordinance number 210622-360, Oh, Brandy, yes, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. Our first and only public hearing for tonight, as the mayor stated, is CZ 2019 0087 McLendon Place Conditional Rezoning. This request is to rezone approximately 31 acres from single-family to conditional zoning general business district and to conditional zoning single-family SF5. The applicant is Fincher Road Partners LLC, and the intent is to rezone the property to allow up to 170 townhouse units and two retail office buildings. Before you, on the screen is the concept plan showing the outline of the community with the commercial buildings blanking the intersection of Potter and Fincher and the amenities centrally located. The overall density with tree save and open space is 5.58 units per acre. And you see that the roundabout has been removed at the intersection here. This was originally proposed as a roundabout, is now proposed as a red light. That's all dictated by NC DOT. Here is an aerial map showing the parcels relevant to this request in blue. An aerial of the property, just looking from above. Some photos of the existing site, looking south along Potter Road with the property to your left. Looking west along Fincher with the property on your right. Current zoning map in the light yellow you'll see is SF1. Future land use map shows this area set out to be medium-density residential. And I also would like to note that the state of North Carolina land use laws did change through 160D. Originally, this request, there was a comprehensive map amendment accompanying this request. That 160D land use law changed and said, if, if a rezoning comes before you and you vote to approve it, it automatically changes your future land use map, so you don't see that comprehensive amendment within this proposal tonight. So let's talk about what the original changes, the changes from the original proposal. The density was reduced from 180 units to 170 units. Visitor parking was increased, and then the quality of the product was upgraded with it being all brick. Here's a sample of the architecture rendering that displays the all-brick product, and these renderings will be tied to this approval via condition. Here's the commercial rendering. Same, same goes here, these renderings will be tied to this approval. So how would traffic and parking be handled? The applicant will be required to meet all NC DOT requirements and install all traffic improvements as dictated by the traffic analysis and/or the technical memorandum completed for this project. The applicant has submitted plans that show parking exceeds what's required by the Unified Development Ordinance for both the commercial and residential portions of this property. Two community meetings were held as required, 15 people attended, several questions were answered, and comments included concerns about traffic worsening due to, due to the density of the project, water runoff concerns about drainage issues and low water pressure, concerns about the townhome prices maybe too low, commercial business not a fit for the area, and then a concern for wildlife in the area. Consistency with adopted plans. This development is part of the Austin Village Center overlay. The plan, the proposed plan is inconsistent with the future land use designation, but is a reasonable request due to the mix of residential densities described in the Village Center overlay. In summary, this request is consistent with the comp plan and promotes the goals of the plan in the area of land use and housing. This is a reasonable request, and staff suggests the conditions listed in your packet, which the applicant has agreed to in writing. So the requested action is before you tonight. Please note that the 24-hour delayed vote requirement that was in effect during the state of emergency has been lifted, so if council so chooses, they can take action tonight on this. Happy to entertain any questions you may have. The applicant is present for questions as well, and thank you for your time. And the developer also has a presentation as well, a short presentation.
Well, developer, go first. Yeah, okay. I can go to public comments first. Everyone, please, all right. We have a lot of people here that want to speak tonight, and we want to be respectful to everyone, so no clapping, no outbursts. I will not give a warning. Somebody screams out, I will ask you to leave. If you do not accept my, my request to leave, I will have you removed by the captain. Okay? If you agree with somebody's public comments, by all means, raise your hand and do that. But we're going to keep the noise level down because it is disruptive. But by all means, raise your hand, let the council know you agree with somebody's public comments, even if all of you raise your hand. And the reason for that, in the past, when people start with their outburst and clapping, it begins to become... clapping, it begins to become a little more vulgar, and people go at each other. So I'm not going to have that during the meeting. We're just going to be very respectful to one another, those for and those against. And everyone will have their time. Reminder, you have three minutes to speak. Speak to the council as a whole. Do not call out any council members. Your public comment period will end if you do. And when you reach the podium and state your name, your time will begin. First, Joanne Johnson. You okay with that?
Is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you understand me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was here last year, and the last statement I made was that I've had 10 or 11 mailboxes knocked down. Well, since then, I've had another one knocked down the other night. So it keeps going. We have more traffic now than we had then. And I'd just like to know where all the traffic's gonna go to. With all this traffic on here, I don't see how we're gonna add more traffic to it. There are five places now that they are building 180 new units to, besides us, besides our area. There are five other ones that are already under construction. Potter Road is not going to be able to handle all that. Right there at Potter Road, and I live at Potter and Fincher, right there in the middle of it. So I know what the traffic is like. I see it every day. They stop, scream, yell, and holler. The cars just, they just keep piling up. And I don't know whether traffic lights gonna do it or not. Because if you get five people down on this end, 500 is gonna come on the other end.
Just got one other question. I don't know whether you can answer it or not. It's Pleasant Plains intersection, down the Pleasant Plains intersection. I've understood, and I have been told, that Pleasant Plains is bankrupt, that they can't do anything about that intersection. They get one person through that light. It has been backed up into front of my house, which is three blocks, to get to turn. So I just hope that you don't put any more property, I mean, any more houses out that way. We just can't handle it. But thank you very much.
Thank you. And all questions asked to the council will be answered after all people have spoken. Counsel, you can ask questions of anyone that spoke after each one spoke. David, I can't... What you said. Sorry about that. Take me...
David Patagamas, 805 Carmona Court. If you take this project and the council approves this, you'll be having about 500 new units either in, being completed or on the books in this area of about a mile around Austin Village. To me, that is not in harmony with your comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive, you have some bullet points in your Unified Development Ordinance adoption purposes that say a project has to meet certain criteria. There are two issues for me. One is this type of project fitting in with the character of the established neighborhood, and the second is the safety issue. I think the safety issue encompasses many of those because it talks about pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic. Potter Road just cannot handle that type of density of traffic. I've heard, I went to the Glenhurst meeting, and I heard from other people that, you know, you guys can't hold these projects up because North Carolina doesn't fix the roads. Well, to me, this council is responsible for the safety of the people of Indian Trail, whether or not the state fixes roads or not. It's up to you to provide a safety. And to me, I think it's derelict if you go ahead and allow this when there are safety issues, just because the state doesn't fix the road. The last thing is, in your IT, Indian Trail comprehensive plan, the retail offices and development, it says in itself, retail and office are to be located nearest to the intersection of two boulevards or thoroughfares and a village center. I don't know why you would consider moving commercial farther down the road. We have a village center there, and I think that's good enough, and there should not be any additional commercial development outside of that. I think this project should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up would be, is that Robert?
Segou.
Segou, okay. Thank you, sir.
My name is Robert Segou. I'm a 40-plus-year owner of property in this area. And this situation that we find ourselves faced with today is something that was there almost 22 years ago when we were doing the same thing, a different group of people, obviously, but it was the same kind of request. And obviously, things are a lot worse today than they were 20 years ago as far as the traffic and high-density building. So to me, I don't understand why anybody would even think about putting any more high-density on roads that we can't even keep paved or can't keep serviceable. There are, a lot of them are dangerous with the potholes that are in them. And yet, we're talking about putting approximately, probably 1,000 to 1,200 more automobiles within a probably less than a half of a mile there. When all of the development is done, that's going to be a consequence of approving this tonight. Because the fellow, Mr. Harrell, owns the other property, and that is the other property is what he was trying to get changed 20 years ago. So once you do this precedent set, then you might as well move out unless you want to walk down the road. But I think that, you know, with what your responsibilities are as a person that's supposed to be elected for me, the taxpayer, and look at my best interest, not some developer or not some friend or associate, you need to stand up for me. And I speak collectively for all the people in my community. And also, Mr. Mayor Alvarez, I think you are doing a good job. I want to say that, I spoke with you, I spent a while back. But I'm not going to bore you with a lot of, you know, other details that I could go into. That's all I have to say, and I think, you know, you will do the responsible things. The people that are on this board will. The other ones, maybe they have under, I don't know, other considerations. Let's put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cade Bachelor? Did I get that right?
Yep.
All right. One out of four.
So my name's Cade Bachelor. I live at, on Waxall Indian Trail Road, right across from Fincher. I'm in favor of this project. I travel Fincher Road every day to work, to the gym, to visit friends and family. I've been in Indian Trail my entire life. My family has had businesses, still had businesses for 30-plus years in Indian Trail. And, you know, I'm a millennial, I'm a young professional, project engineer for a fairly large company. And looking at these plans that were submitted right there, those all-brick is pretty hard to beat, you know. Brick on the townhomes, it's a great-looking aesthetic for the city. I think that fits in with what Indian Trail is looking for. And, you know, I want to see Indian Trail reach its full potential right now. You know, the housing market, everybody knows how tough it is. It's hard to find a quality home that you can feel comfortable in right now. You know, Indian Trail included. And I think that it's a great area. I think that a lot of young people would like to be here, especially with the way that the town is going. And, you know, finding somewhere that you can be comfortable in and have a quality build, you know, an entire, a brick exterior, that's not something that you find every day now. You see a lot of vinyl, you see a lot of other options. So, you know, I've been on Fincher Road late at night, and it's not always the most comfortable feeling when you're right there at Fincher and Potter. It's not very well-lit. And you've got people, whether they're residents or guests of residence, not quite sure, but, you know, when you're running around in the middle of the road, that's not safe for anybody on the road or driving through the road. And, you know, traffic being everyone's concern right now, as traffic patterns develop, that's when solutions and improvements also develop. So I think by looking at that with the all-brick and exceeding the parking space requirements for both retail and, you know, the residential as well, that no cost is being spared. So what would you rather see built there if you don't want to see those? Thank you.
Nicholas Southwich? Nicholas? Going once? Twice? Sold? Levi Castle?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you and the rest of the community members here today. Try not to echo or add on to what other individuals have said before me. I do want to say that I oppose this development as well as the rezoning put forth to you today. Couple of concerns that I would have that I would ask you to consider as well is, as the gentleman earlier mentioned, we have multiple developments already in progress or already planned to begin within at least a mile radius of this site. The number of units is just going to continue to climb as we continue to rezone areas just farther and farther up. I would also like you to consider that near the intersection of Potter and Chestnut, there is already a multi-unit retail space that is completely empty. It has been empty since, you know, before 2020. I don't, I'm not in a position financially to open a business there myself. There may be members in this meeting that are. But I don't see how adding more retail space on a congested road when there is already space not used, I don't see that as a good or consistent with the laid-out strategy. I would also just like to say that the plan that's been put forth, the development, has changed multiple times considering what I saw over a year ago. My property is the farthest right at the very top. And the only reason I point that out is because there are two proposed drainage ponds that will be within probably 75 feet of my home. My two young children under the ages of five currently. I don't, I would love to not have to worry about them playing in the woods. And when I say that, I genuinely mean that. I grew up in eastern Kentucky. When I moved here, I moved into Indian Brook because of what it is now, not because of what someone wants to change it into. Thank you for this time. Please consider the voices that you're hearing here today. Within the past 48 hours, I've spoken to 52 different homeowners in the Indian Brook. All of those have voiced a negative opinion towards this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Williams?
Hi, my name's David Williams. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for hearing us out, and I hope we are heard because I, for one, I am definitely against this project. It seems to me like, you know, I've been in construction a long time, and I know there's cost involved, a lot of planning. You know, there's a lot of factors involved with doing the development. But I wonder if there's, you know, any consideration at all for the cost of the local people here and the town itself for that matter. It's heavy, it's severe, it's a daily price we'll have to pay. A price of more traffic, which has obviously been mentioned, which is already horrible. The very idea of adding more people, I mean, I've lived here for 20 years, I'm from Matthews. I moved to Indian Trail because I love it here. I'm very proud to be here. I'm a very proud member of this community. And, you know, the main thing that comes to my mind is, why, why are we changing this town? I mean, it's such a wonderful place, and you're destroying it. You're absolutely destroying it with all this development. And I'm a big nature guy, always have been. I grew up in Matthews, I lived in the woods. I know the trees, the woods, the wildlife here. It's beautiful. It's God's gift to us, and it is a sin to destroy all this natural habitat in the name of money and profit. And a brick, you know, who cares? You know, you're talking about bricks, what about the turtles and the red-tailed hawks and the northern flickers and the mating pairs of owls that are there in my woods every night? I live on Fincher Road, I'm right there in the middle of all this. Me and my dog walk these woods every day. Every day I take him walking around. And, you know, you have to consider, you know, like was said, there's so many other projects, it's not just this project that you need to consider. Because it's in conjunction with everything else that's going on around here. I mean, it's ridiculous. 180 more units packed on to what we already have around here? We don't need more housing here. We need, if you, you know, my suggestion, and it may sound crazy, but leave the woods alone there. There's only so much woods around here, and there's only so many places the wildlife can go. Since all this development is going on, I see more deer every day. And y'all might not care about wildlife, but once you destroy it, you'll never get it back. And I suggest leave the property as it is. Don't charge the owner taxes for 20 years. Designated it as a wildlife area, for goodness sake, leave some.
Mr. Williams, time's up.
My time's up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I said all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I was enjoying your wildlife. I truly was. Mr. Richard Rust.
Richard Rust, Morfield Drive. Offering no public comment or justification for your vote on the Glenhurst project in callous disregard for the concerns put forth makes me scared of what you will do with the vote here tonight. So let me remind you who at one time you said you would be for your constituents when you were seeking election. Mr. Cohen said he hoped that citizens would take an active role guiding the direction the town takes. Ignoring citizens' concerns or rubber-stamping developer deals was a thing of the past. Mr. McIntyre said that during the planning, we must not lose the very qualities that drew us to this community and be determined to preserve our quality of life. Mr. Head said residents deserve representation and allows them a true voice in that what residents think should be the guiding force behind every action the council makes. Together, he said, we can find a solution to uncontrolled growth. That's who you said you were then. My question is, who are you now? We know the developer has deep pockets, he has standing in the community, he's tight with your planning department, he's even on your comprehensive plan advisory board. But for all those advantages, he has no more, no less rights than anyone else in this room or anyone in this community. His wants and needs certainly do not trump the combined generation of people who are opposed to this. So I have a question. Do you go and look at what's being proposed, this project? Have you gone out and seen how out of place this is for where it's being proposed? Have you sat through six lights at 2:30 in the afternoon waiting to get through Pleasant Plains? The developer said to a resident after last year's planning vote that he could not make money the way it's zoned. Really? Union County GIS map shows that he paid an average circa around $36,000 to $40,000 per acre for 50 acres that he bought on both sides of Fincher. Now, if you're telling me in today's market, at that price per acre, he can't make money building houses the way it's zoned, then why did you act convinced when Martin Homes said they could command $625,000 for a 2,500-square-foot home, third of an acre, no amenity, in Glenhurst? I guess money is relative. Now, I'm pragmatic, look at facts. In your May 20th planning meeting, your planning board talked about the two-year county interceptor program. Cripple Creek cannot be updated. Why does Brandy not speak about that when it comes to Dean's project? That it might be seven to 10 years before sewage and water capacity would be built out for this type of project? This council cannot keep writing checks, our infrastructure cannot cash. Even a conditional zoning that accounts for that for this project would be a bad idea because in seven to 10 years, other parts of this project would be antiquated and unacceptable to execute then. So do we have a chance? I don't know. Last time when we knew about the vote for more than two days, we brought hundreds of paper petitions along with 450 online petitions. We filled this room to capacity with people against this project. If that ground swell did not sway you then, if that amount of citizen participation does not... not sway you now, then maybe it's not the process, but those in charge of the process that needs to be changed. If this is being voted on today on the down-low because everything is relatively the same, then know that the people that opposed this then are absolutely unchanged. Finally, please remember who you said you would be when seeking election one time and vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Rust. Andrew Matlock.
My name is Andrew Matlock, I'm at 833 Carmona Court. So let's look exactly at why we're all here. Yet another developer seeking to profit an exorbitant amount of money by cramming as many residential and commercial units into a limited space. Yet another developer seeking to maximize their revenue by forcing 170 townhomes and two commercial buildings on this side of Fincher Road. But wait, there's more. The next step will be to develop the other side of Fincher Road with the proposed 153 townhomes, condos, pinwheel homes. This is what they do, it's just business. Why else are we here this evening? Yet another Charlotte neighboring town council awaiting the option to allow such development and progress in order to generate maximum additional tax revenue. With other towns for development, increased population, most significantly to generate tax dollars. This is what they do, it's just business. But for the current residents in this council's constituents, it's not just business, it's personal. Our quality of life, that's at stake every time a new development is approved, which cram as many homes into an area as physically possible. This section of southwest Indian Trail and further down Potter's Road, Potter's Road is a special place. It's an established area of homes that even without this proposed development is facing an overload on its roads, schools, and utilities. Growth and development of untouched land is inevitable, especially given the appeal of our area and the influx of folks moving here. There's a reason why this proposed development will have no problem filling up. It's a desirable place to live. However, there has to be some sort of compromise that preserves the values and the characteristics of this area. Placing commercial property in this area makes no sense whatsoever. Why not keep commercial property further down Potter's Road at the intersection with Chestnut? For goodness sakes, these shopping centers are not even completely developed, nor are they at full capacity. So why should we add more now in a section where there is none? Stuffing this many homes into a single area cannot be the only option. Single-family homes on an acre, half-acre, a third, or a quarter makes a lot more sense and is completely in line with this area. High-density townhomes, condos, apartments, or commercial properties need to go on Potter's Road or 74, not here. When will it be enough to shove as many apartments, condos, townhomes into these land gaps? When there is no more land? When all of your citizens live on top of each other? When your citizens' roads are now parking lots? When your citizens' classrooms are packed like sardines? When your citizens' utilities are working overtime to accommodate the pressures put on them every day? After your time and your service as a council member is over, what will you look back at and consider to be your achievement? Will it be new buildings, sprawling communities, growth from a small town into a thriving, modern, more metropolitan area? You have the opportunity to be more intentional with the projects that you allow and where you allow them. You have the opportunity to preserve areas of Indian Trail such as ours and maintain the qualities that make them special, even with growth.
Thank you. Jan Thomas.
Hi, I'm Jan Thomas. I'm a resident of Indian Brook Forest, which is right at Fincher, Potter, Chestnut. So I know they've changed the plan to have a red light instead of the roundabout, which is better. However, that road is still flared out, and people don't stop at a stop sign, so I'm sure they're probably not going to stop at that red light because they're trying to get out into that road, which is continually backed up no matter what time of day it is. So please think about that. Also, we already have four different develops, developments going in that half-mile area. There's another one on the other side of Chestnut going toward Weddington that's going to be started too. So where are all these 1,200, 1,500 people going to go? Because I can tell you, when I leave for work at 6:30 in the morning, it takes me 35 to 40 minutes to get to Monroe Road from my development. It's already too many cars, too many people, schools can't handle it. Can we not just wait a little bit and take it a little bit slower and see how the developments that are already underway, how it affects the traffic and the schools, instead of trying to get all this done at once? Really want to question why all these have to be done at this time and this timeframe? It really makes no sense. Like a lot of us, we moved out here over 30 years ago. I grew up in Charlotte, I didn't want to raise my kids in Charlotte, so moved here, and now I'm back in Charlotte, basically, again. So please, think about what you're doing, think about the people. We like our town the way it is. We don't want to be in Charlotte. If we did, we would have just moved there or stayed there. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
This from you also?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to put that into record since you showed up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Clarence, also Brooks.
How are you doing? Thank you for your time. My name is Clarence Alsobrooks. I live on Fincher Road. I am a fifth generation of Alsobrooks that have been Union County or Indian Trail. My daughter is a sixth generation that's been here in Indian Trail. So I have seen a lot of change in Indian Trail. I'm going to try to get through my notes, and if I have anything extra on the end, I'll come across also. But, so, when I heard about this project and everything, I went and did my research. And I watched YouTube videos to see what was going on, and I heard a lot of people saying stuff, and I wanted to offer a different side of the corner of what they were saying. I hear a lot of people speaking with emotion, and some of those emotion, I don't see the same, I don't see it the way they do. So with that said, I actually used to be on the planning board of Indian Trail many years ago. So I understand your position and what you have to do, and listen to people, represent to people. The question is though, is this project about what Dean Hurrell has proposed, or is it about growth? Or is the argument? So if it's about the project, the applicant submitted paperwork, plans, they had to be approved. They had to be approved by the appropriate offices of North Carolina. They have four sides of brick. They meet, you know, all the other qualifications that are needed for this project, so check it off. Why can't we approve it if it meets everything that's required? Now, if it's about growth, then we have to talk about a lot of different things as far as growth is concerned. I've lived in Indian Trail for 46 years, and besides college and the military, I've been in this area. I came back to this area. I wanted to be in this area, I wanted my kids to go to the same schools that I went to. I went to Sun Valley and owned Appalachian State. I remember when the closest grocery store was in Matthews, and we had to travel to Matthews to, for groceries. And when I was a teenager, there weren't any jobs in Indian Trail. You had to go to either Monroe to get a job, or you had to go to Matthews. There was nothing here. So, you know, the growth came with Indian Trail, and it opened up a lot of opportunity. And for the sake of time, I'm going to hit some of my other points about what's been I've heard people say that, let me skip over. I had a young neighbor that is for this project also. And she said, she and her husband, she's from Russia, they worked hard, they came, they bought a piece of land in Indian Trail so they can, you know, they have their forever home. And what I hear from people here is, they moved here and they had a dream. But unfortunately, they thought that the dreams of Indian Trail stopped when they achieved their dreams. There are other people that are going to come here that have dreams. What about the person that comes from California that wants to open up an art studio, art lessons or whatever in the commercial part?
Time's up. Thank you. Michael Sazeski, did I say that correctly? What was that? You're yielding your time?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Chad Cowart.
Hello, Chad Cowart, 3200 Bow Hunter Trail. Our personal lot is four acres. The neighbor next to us is also four acres, the one behind us also four acres. That's one family per four acres. We all butt up against this. Here you're putting six families per acre versus one per four. Of course, they would want to live there because of what we did, not because of what their builder is doing. The original plan here called for 180 units. It was shot down because 10 units were to be added at the builder's discretion later on with no one's approval. I would ask you, this program, I have not seen this, what's happening here, but I would go through every single piece of this because the last city council didn't know that. And if you think every builder out there won't learn that this is how you get around people like you and people like this, is you put one or two little buildings down with the right to add more buildings later, and then nobody can get to say anything until they're up, and no one's going to take them down once they are up. So, my point is, the density is just too great. You can't just keep putting seven families on one acre right next to lots that are one family per multi-acres. It just doesn't work like that. You just, anyway, I think it's a bad idea, and I'm against it.
That concludes those of you that were here in person to speak. There are several letters and emails that were written as part of public comments, which I'm going to read aloud into record. So bear with me. This is from Frank Todd. I'm writing about this proposed development as I will be unable to attend a town council meeting. I am very much opposed to this development as the sheer number of units will put too much traffic on Potter Road, which is already overburdened at times as it is. Furthermore, it will adversely impact Sun Valley schools. We moved here for a more rural setting and building condos and apartments affects the enjoyment of my property as well as that of others. If I had wanted to live in Charlotte, I would not have moved from Charlotte. And if this were Charlotte, where many of this type of development already exist, then I don't think anyone would mind building one more. While I understand the developer slash landowner's desire to make a profit, the type of housing proposed doesn't match with the surrounding neighborhoods, I do not believe anyone would have issues with the developer, if the developer placed single-family dwellings on the land on either side of Fincher Road, just not high-density housing. This one comes from Christine Quigley. We have been longtime residents of Indian Trail, living in the Indian Brook subdivision. There is currently so much construction in our area already. Our roads, way too much traffic, and overcrowded schools can't keep up. We strongly oppose the rezoning and development at said property at CZ 2019-0087 McLendon Place, Fincher Road. This new proposed development will be right by us. We are concerned for our quiet cul-de-sac street, added road, and traffic congestion. Also affecting our property values, disrupting our quiet neighborhood and the possibility of more crime in the area. This one comes from Lynn Coulson. My family lives on Parkstone Drive off Fincher Road. We are adamantly against the McLendon Road, McLendon Place development at Potter and Fincher Road. We moved to Parkstone Drive because the area was less congested than Matthews. With this proposed new development of 274 townhomes and retail space, the traffic in this area would be unbearable, and the peaceful nature of the area will be gone. We moved to this area to pass the, pass by the cows out to the pasture as we drove home. These views are slowly being taken away. Our schools are crowded now, roads are at capacity, and we do not want this area to be rezoned. We do not want McLendon Place, we do not want McLendon Place proposal to be approved or any other rezoning in this area of Potter and Fincher Road. I cannot pronounce her name, forgive me. It is, my name is Senia Guglovia. I am Julian's wife and co-owner of the 3708 Fincher Road property. Here is my statement regarding this project. I do support this development as I believe it will rejuvenate the area and positively affect its residents. Current site conditions with dilapidated buildings and garbage everywhere help nobody and the new development provide much-needed homes for the people. Besides, Fincher Road looks very bad and abandoned in its current condition, and as a resident living on this street, I would like to see it improve. As a licensed and experienced Realtor, I also think that this development will have a positive impact on the surrounding property values as it will help the area become more appealing and desirable. As a professional architectural designer, I find a development's design beneficial for the community. Based on the development plan drawings, I see that the builder intends to maintain surrounding residents' privacy by providing reasonable step backs along the development's perimeter. An objection expressed by the public about the increased traffic and number of children in schools, while somewhat relevant in today's circumstances, I'm sure will be addressed by the municipalities as the town continues to grow. They don't build new roads and schools where they aren't an influx of population which equals influx in tax money. Growth is inevitable. While the area continues to experience economic rise, in my opinion, this development represents a healthy and respectable way of growing the community and providing homes for the people of this area. From Rebecca Helms. Being a lifetime resident of Indian Trail and seeing all the construction and development already taking place in all around Potter Road and Chestnut, I strongly oppose the rezoning and development of the property indicated in case number ZZ 2019-0087 McLendon Place, Fincher Road. We live in a quiet cul-de-sac in the Indian Brook subdivision, and this new development will be right on top of us. My neighbors and I do not want it. Not only will this add even more traffic to our already crowded and neglected roads and overcrowded schools, we feel like it will bring our property values down, disrupt our quiet neighborhood, and add more crime to our area. This one comes from Suzanne Lineberger. I live on Seniceni Road and have been here for 38 years. I would like to voice my opinion against another high-density development in this area. Before we even take this into consideration, we would need our roads repaid and a solution to back up Potter Road and Pleasant Plains Road. We should also have more schools in place. We already have two new developments that are unfinished on Chestnut Lane. Just bear with me one sec. Okay. At this time, I'll close the.
Mayor, no worries.
But.
I have one more before you close.
One more that was sent in?
The last minute, yes. It came in from Timothy Hudson.
Okay, would you read that, please?
Their fiance, Victoria. They just said they're 100% against, and it would be a disaster for their neighborhood, and that's it.
Okay. Yes. I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to push the button. If you could leave the public comments open while the developer does his presentation?
Oh, I can, I can do that.
Please do.
I can do that. If the developer would like to do their presentation. Have fun. Okay. Don't you run out of the building now.
Go ahead and get started here. Do we want to wait for councilmembers? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Colton Harrell, and I'm the project manager for Arti Harrell Company in McLendon Place. We certainly appreciate you having us here tonight and giving us opportunity to present this project. This is something we've been working on for some time now, and we're certainly proud of the product that we're presenting here. I want to start off with talking about the current conditions and what we're proposing to bring, and then I'll come back to the site plan. Right now, on Fincher Road, there are certain portions that are in very poor condition, as you can see here. This is on our property where the site is being proposed. There are several trailers that need to be removed, and this is not what we want to see in Indian Trail. This is, when people come to see Indian Trail, this isn't what we want to be represented by. So what you can see is, you have the buildings here, and you also have trash that's scattered out through the entire property. So you're going from those mobile homes to something like, exactly like this. This is the architecture that we're proposing. It's brick, stone, stucco, and hardy board accents. This is a product that is going to stand the test of time. This is a very high-quality product that we're offering here. A few more angles. This is the retail space that we're, this is a rendering. The architectural facade colors will blend with the townhomes themselves, so the entire project will have the same aesthetic. Moving into the amenities, I'll show again when I pull back up the site plan exactly where these amenities are located. This is a flex-place structure that we're offering in one of the parks that we will be building. There will be grills and benches provided for, this will be a gathering place for the community. Here's the fountain that will be built in front of the cabana. This is the cabana. For the pool portion, it does have a his-and-hers bathroom, and also the architecture will blend well with the rest of the site, too. This is a saltwater pool that will be built directly in front of this cabana. There will be a trail system built out through the entirety of the project that connects the sidewalks of the project. Throughout the trail system, we will have four exercise stations built. They're going to have a natural look, so they're going to blend in with the woods that we do leave remaining on the project. And when I pull back up the site plan, I can show you exactly where these will be located. Go back here. What our goal is with this wilderness trail is to hopefully one day have it connected to a greenway trail that connects the entirety of the floodplains throughout Indian Trail. I'm going to go back to the site plan now. Okay, so originally, we had proposed and requested that we would be allowed to go up to 180 units. We have since moved that down to 170 and locked that in at 170. The commercial retail space up to the northwestern corner of the project, we're asking for up to 16,200 square feet of commercial retail space there. And what that'll be is something like a coffee shop, a restaurant, a dry cleaner, something that not only serves the members of this community, but also the members of the surrounding community. We have sidewalks coming up and down Fincher Road that actually turn off onto Potter Road that is going to help close that gap between Austin Village and the McLendon Place. So hopefully, our plan is to eventually have those two sidewalks connected to allow members of this community, and again, the surrounding members, to be able to have walkability to the shopping center that is just north of this project. Our square footages for the buildings, we're looking at 1,750 to 2,200 square feet per building. Three bedrooms. We're doing a 50-50 split, approximately a 50-50 split, between a master down and a single front-load car garage. Our thought process on the master down is a lot of the older people like to have the master down so they don't have to climb stairs. I did recently drive from this project to the new hospital that's being built in Stallings, and it's seven minutes from this project to the new hospital. If, what our plan are, we would like to have business professionals, doctors, nurses, young professionals that can live and work, can live in Indian Trail and possibly work at the hospital and work in the surrounding businesses. There is, we're having a minimum of a 50-foot buffer throughout the entire perimeter of the project. In the northeastern portion of the project, where the floodplain actually is, there will be up to 100-foot buffer there, so there's a pretty significant buffer. If you see on the drawing there, kind of to the north, it's in red. That is the wilderness walking trail. That's going to be five feet. And the exercise areas will be evenly spaced out throughout the walking trail. I also have Dean Harrell here. He can step up and talk to you about the traffic and answer any questions you may have. I'll also make myself available for any specific site questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's Dean Harrell. I'm the petitioner for the McLendon Place project. As was mentioned, this has been through several modifications, and we have reduced the density down to what we can and still provide an all-brick, four-sided product. We just don't know how much better of a product we can do than what we're proposing due to the cost. And so when we get to the cost, you know, with inflation the way it is today, it's just hard to keep up with these numbers. We think we can get in at $290, but as it's looking, as we're going forward, I don't know that we can get under 300. We've proposed $290 to $340, but I think it's going to probably bust 300 to 360, the way it's going. So it's a great tax value for the town and for the county. I think our estimates show that at build-out with commercial and residential, this generates right around 300 and something thousand per year for tax base for the county and the town. But I'm here, I want to focus. It seems that, oh, and before I do that, I know there's a lot of folks here from Indian Brook. So just to give you a little bit of history of Indian Brook, my dad used to own the majority of property that is now Indian Brook. He sold that back in the '70s to Leroy Russian. Leroy Russian developed that, and it became their dream to have a home, only larger lot. But the reason those lots are larger, at the time, there was no infrastructure from the county going up through there. So when you have a four-acre lot, it's most likely that the majority remaining on that lot won't perk. So now that there is substantial investment from Union County, there's a sewer line along the eastern edge of this property that goes up through the floodplain. This project does gravity feed all the way to that sewer line. But to get to traffic, if we could bring up the slide that shows the traffic improvements. So this is a schematic. This traffic report is very extensive. It's got a lot of technical study and science behind it, but it boils down to, how do we mitigate the traffic? This project's going to bring some traffic. There's no doubt about it. But the study shows, and it's signed by a traffic engineer from Davenport, which is probably between Davenport and Kimbley-Hornet, probably in the top traffic study companies. Potter Road at Chestnut is fine with this particular development. It doesn't get into the, what we call the F-factor, which means it's failing. We understand completely about the intersection of Pleasant Plains and Potter. Listen, I've lived here all my life. I was here when Potter Road was a dirt road. And the intersection of Pleasant Plains and Potter has been a problem for a long time. From my understanding, and of course, it's in a different municipality, so Indian Trail has no control over that intersection at this time. Stallings has control over it. We understand that the engineering is done, that the acquisition of properties is in play. The trees have been removed that affect that improvement. The power lines have started to be moved, so that's coming. It is absolutely a terrible intersection, but it is failing. And at that point, is when DOT, DOT's not going to be proactive. They're going to be reactive. So it's failing, and it is slowly going, but it is happening. So now we come back to Chestnut. In 2006, the four property owners on those corners got together, which I'm one of them, and we'd split the cost of a million-dollar improvement there, which was the red light with the cross, the turn lanes and the crossarms. And now that improvement would probably double that, but it is a working intersection at this time. So as you come on down to Fincher, the, today, without this project, without McLendon Place, it needs, the traffic study shows, it needs a left-hand turn lane on Potter, turning left onto Fincher today. This is part of our improvements that we're proposing. We will build that turn lane. Also, if you're coming from South Potter to Fincher and turning right, it needs a right turn lane. We're proposing to do that. If you're coming down Fincher, turning left onto Potter, it needs a left-hand turn lane. We propose to do that. And the reason we can do those features is, we own both sides of the road. So a lot of times, you get into this question of, how are we going to condemn properties or get enough right-of-way? There's, that doesn't come into play here because we own both sides of the road. So all the blue improvements that are right turns, left turns, flow through lanes on that plan, is the developer's responsibility, and we will do that. Now, let's talk about the red light and at one time, a roundabout. The, a roundabout is less maintenance for DOT because of traffic stabilization. However, as we know, DOT funding is next to none this year and probably, most likely, next year. But when we get into 2023, it looks like it may be loosening up some. So this project doesn't happen overnight. We feel like this is a three-year project. It's about 50, you know, 55, 56 units a year could be built and absorbed realistically. The roundabout, we as an individual developer have no condemnation authority. So the majority of the roundabout would come on the Fincher roadside. However, it would expand across Potter Road, get into some folks' property and yard there. And right now, it's probably just not justifiable as Town Engineering Department can tell you the cost of a roundabout is astronomical right now. So you step back and you say, what about a red light? So we had the engineers do a technical memorandum to study just this project, and it doesn't, it doesn't--
Mr. Harrell?
Yep.
You're going to have to speed up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right, so bottom line is, the red light, this particular project doesn't kick in the red light, but what we're willing to do is put up to $100,000 in a fund. So when DOT or the town says that this is now needed a red light, that money will be there in the fund to use towards that red light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez? May I bring you something?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Just give me one moment. For the record, Council and those in place, there was a protest petition. And I'm not going to go through every name to see how many matched to public comments that were this, against this project, that was signed by, did you put that number up there?
Yeah, there's around 495.
They counted the numbers on the front. There are two petitions, one hand signature that has a number circled, and then there's a second one that represents the residents of the 400 in the back. So on the front cover page that I wrote, it should be about 81 residential signatures and 400 and some odd non-residential signatures.
Okay.
It has not been verified. It was just presented to me.
Okay. And I'm going to pass this for everyone to take a quick look at while I speak. Keeping track of those that were here tonight and the written comments that were not duplicates, there were 14 people that spoke or written against it, two people that spoke or written for it, and two that either were not here or abstained from speaking. As for the council's information, Brandy. Those dilapidated trailers, are they within eyesight where code enforcement would have seen them? Because they obviously don't fit into current codes of Indian Trail and are relevant to this fact since they were brought to picture as a reason to build there? And is there anything that's been complained about or in motion to have them removed?
We have not received formal complaints. Our code enforcement does have some cases in that area. Some of those mobile homes have been removed by the property owner, so there's a variety of things taking place there. We do typically act on complaints, but with some of them being very visible, we do have cases open in the area.
I know that works. Those definitely do not look like they're livable structures.
Correct.
Okay. And would pose a danger to anybody that would, regardless of how the council decides to act tonight. When was this brought for a developer's workshop? In 2019, okay. All right.
Mayor, I'm not sure we closed public comment.
Oh, I need to close public comments, right. I'm closing public comments, thank you. So, all right, and-- All right, Council, have, yes, everybody passed around yet? If Council's going to, now I'm going to offer Council a chance to ask questions, both from those that have spoken, if anybody wrote one down, to the developer/petitioner and our staff and to discuss this matter. I'll go down the line, so nobody interrupts anybody, and keep it civil. I'll be honest with you, I know very little other than pictures that I've seen about this particular project. And I have no opinion on it, other than, there's no agreement with the county on sewer. I personally don't think any rezoning should be brought to the town until we have an agreement for water and sewer in place, because that is one of the few valid reasons why we can actually speak about turning something down. And that's just my take on any rezoning at this particular moment. Mr. Morse, did you have any questions or discussion? You want to start at the other end, Mr. McIntyre?
I do, actually. Can you hear me? Mr. Hunsinger, quick question for you. I heard about a few projects that are being built on Potter Road. Are all of these projects being built in Indian Trail town limits? Or are there some in Stallings or Wellington? Can you speak to that at all, just to clear that up?
Well, can you hear me? I heard about four or five projects. I heard about four or five projects. I don't know of four or five projects far as Indian Trail's town limits. There could be some further down to Wellington. Brandy?
So the two projects I'm aware of are Harper's Run and then the recently-approved Clover Senior Living. The other projects are within different jurisdictions, not Indian Trail.
Yeah, on the, sorry, on the construction. Let me ask the questions, please, please. I gave you guys a chance to speak. Let us just try and get the information, please. Reason I was asking is, we're talking about the senior living. Is that on Chestnut or is that on Potter?
That's on Chestnut, right before you get to Old Marrow.
Okay, so that's the one that's on the construction right now?
No, the one on the construction right now is in Stallings. That's on Chestnut, but that is in Chestnut Lane.
On, across the street is the, that's just the senior--
Yes.
Senior place.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. That's the only questions I have for you.
Mr. Harrell, did you have a question for anyone? Mr. Cohen? You wait, okay. Todd? You can ask questions, comments, whatever. This is your--
I got a question for the town attorney. Mr. Harrell mentioned putting $100,000 in a fund, potentially for roads. Is that possible, or is that come off as an impact fee?
There is an opportunity for the development to contribute their share of the mitigation cost for improvements on those roads that are necessary, and other developers would also contribute. I've not heard anything about this, and so we would certainly, I would certainly need to review what the offer is and figure out with planning and others, whether or not and how we accomplish this. But this is something that could happen. Oftentimes, if one development does not have to take care of the full burden of a mitigation, if there's several others that are contributing to the failure of an intersection.
Currently, just quickly, currently, the conditions listed are tying this developer to what NC DOT says, so it's not necessarily a dollar amount, but that you have to make those traffic improvements. So, it's not necessarily a dollar amount, but that you have to make those traffic improvements is how, is how it's listed in the packet.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate everybody coming to here talking. You know, my philosophy is, the vision of Indian Trail belongs to the people of Indian Trail. The, you know, I, I know the planning board voted this down four-one January of last year. I had a concern about the timeframe between the planning board and bringing it to council, and I asked the town attorney about that. Evidently, the, there's no, evidently no restriction on timeframe, so I just wanted everybody to know that, that, I do think the townhomes look nice, they were improved. As the engineer person pointed out, they do seem to be quality. I don't like the sixteen units per acre, as the other person mentioned. To me, that is high density. I respect everybody's opinion. I would even listen to the guy in the Tar Heel hat. So, I went to Tennessee State, so that's where the red jacket, we're in the College World Series. But I just want to say, I respect the people's opinion. I believe the guy that said that, he talked to fifty neighbors, and I know people I know live over there, I don't know any of them that were for this project. And I do say, it's, this is the people's town, it's not my town, you know, from that standpoint. So, I kinda agree with the planning board, and my view is, I don't agree with, I think, I don't think it's the right thing right now to change the zoning, and that's where I'm at. So-
Mr. Morse, did you have anything to ask, question, debate?
Yeah, I was kinda curious of the statement about Potter's Road. I've lived here, I'm fifty-nine years old, and I've lived here a long time. When was that a dirt road?
It was a dirt road up until about 1968.
Just for the record, I wasn't born yet.
That was my, that was my playground, dirt road, Potter Road.
And how long did you say the build-out would take?
About three years.
The other question I have, do you own all those properties with the trailers?
Yes, so, over the years, we've been, I think, six have been removed. There was one tax lien on a trailer by the IRS. It was mortgaged by a previous owner, so that one's been in limbo for a while and couldn't be done with. But, yes, we own all the parcels now.
And, just coming from my heart, what I can't, what I don't like, and what I'm perceiving, is a piece of property that's intentionally left in disarray so that it can be used as a tool to get something that you want. That's bothersome, because I own property, I bought property that had a bad, mobile homes on it, and I didn't wait till I went for a rezoning or something. I cleaned it up because that was respect to my neighbors. So, I just want, just wanna share that with you, that that does bother me. I do like the, the product, as far as townhomes with brick. I think that is a big improvement from what came before. But I hate the density, especially in that area. The connectivity, these are all positive things. Some of my other concerns, if I can share those now, it, it's the character of the surrounding area. Those are single-family homes, all spread out through there, whether they're a third acre, half acre, four acres, or whatnot. They're not apartments, they're not townhomes, they're not condos, they're single-family residential area. And that's the character. And, and that's important, I believe, when somebody does decide to move into a location, they're looking at the character. I know the character of my area, where I have moved in, when I moved into Indian Trail, has changed dramatically. I've got, I've got an apartment complex, three-hundred unit plus, that's gonna be coming in, a stone stroke from my house. I remember speaking out at a council meeting, opposing it, and a lot of people spoke out. And I also remember a council that approved it. So, I'm hopeful this council is a little more receptive to listening to our residents, not so much of developers. Right now, the pipeline is full of approved projects, whether it's in Indian Trail, or whether it's in Stallings or Weddington. There's a strain on our systems right now with water and sewer that we're trying to get caught up on. The quality of life out there with the woods, with that area, and then you have the loss of habitat thrown in there, it just changes, changes it dramatically. And I, I understand why people get so emotional, and they say, you know, you're gonna change it this dramatically, why the heck should I stay in Indian Trail? You know, you can go ahead and bring in a hundred and sixty new families while these forty move out. It's just, it's hard. It's hard for me to, to sit by, as an elected official, who campaigned on decreasing the high-density development that's going on in our area. Now, I have, I have voted yes, I've lifted my hand. Council knows, I approved an apartment complex. I thought these guys would have a stroke. But it was a good project for that area. More often than not, I have raised my hand against these high-density developments because of the strain it's continuing to put on us. Todd, you already hit it, though, you know, the growth, it should be at the direction of the residents, not planners, no offense, not developers. The trail system is good, I like that. If, you know, the connectivity, that's, that's a positive. But if I was to vote on it, I'll be the vote no. Includes my comments.
Mr. Cohen, did you speak yet?
Yeah, I just have a, a comment or two. I agree with Todd. Incidentally, I've been on this, I've been on this board longer than anybody, and I've voted no quite a few times, and I've voted yes a few times. There's a time to vote yes, and there's a time not to. As a matter of fact, the apartment complex you talked about that got approved, I was adamantly against, so it was, I think, a three-to-two, three-to-two vote on that. Yeah, I didn't agree, agree with that. But sometimes, there are times that, that this is not always a, a bad idea. One of the things I, things that I wanna say that I've learned up here is, I pretty much ran all my campaigns on, I've never taken a dollar from a, a developer in my life, never would, never think it's right to take any money from a developer. But one thing I have learned is, I started out somewhat anti-development, but I, I want us all to remember that the developers have done a lot of good things for this town. They, they built nice neighborhoods, they've built the movie theaters, they've built, which has created nice restaurants, which helped create these beautiful parks that we have. And all of these things have helped us raise the prices of our homes. Our prices right now, Indian Trail, the price of your house in Indian Trail, I just had a, a neighbor sell their house for $30,000 more than he was asking for it. And it just, that's just the market we're in right now. So, developers have done a lot of good things for, for our town. What I'd like to see is, I, I, I think that Mr. Harold has good intentions, but I'm, Dean, I'm not for this simply because of the people in this room aren't in for it. And that's, that's what we're elected for, is to do the will of the people, and always has been. But I would like to say, I wish that everybody could get together, because it's nice to have the wilderness, it's nice to have that, but people own the land, somebody owns that land, and you gotta put yourself in, in their shoes when you own property. You own property, you wanna do with it some, something someday. Someday, maybe that property's gonna go to your grandchildren, it's gonna go to your children, or whatever. It, it, it's a, it's a family thing. So, sometime, I'd like, I wish we could do these things where the developer could sit down and actually speak to the room, and y'all could sit down and say, let's work out something. Because something's gonna go there someday, I'm assuming something's gonna go there, and something's gonna be, hopefully, that's not gonna make everybody happy, because it, that's gonna be impossible. But if you could make most of the people happy, and this, this does not make most of the people happy, so I, I agree with, I think, just about everybody up here, and I'm not for the, for it, so.
I do have one, I do have one point.
I have.
You have a point?
Oh, yeah.
Please go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak at my meeting. I wanted to address that intersection for that lady that spoke first. She had an actual question about Pleasant Plains and Potter. Ms. McLaurin, was there anything in the works that we know of to improve that intersection? It really is. I've driven to work there. I think, I think I started out in the morning with clean shaven. By the time I got through the light, I had a beard.
There you go. That's a good one, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be here all night.
Good. I, I was gonna field that over to Todd. I did make a note to ask DOT to check on the timing of that light, because if it's a timing issue, they need to make some adjustments on that.
And I'd just like to keep, keep everything balanced. Brandy or Todd, how many of those projects are in Union County that were mentioned?
You talking about the developments-
Well, yeah, they said they were in Indian Trail. How many are in Union County?
Every one of them.
All right. I may be here to represent Indian Trail, but everything we do affects every other town, everything they do affects us. So, saying it's just an Indian Trail is completely hogwash and irrelevant. So, we need to pay attention to what's going on in our neighboring towns and how we affect each other, something that's not going on in Union County in forever. So, if anybody tells me that this county's worked together with its towns, they're lying or dreaming, and vice versa. Same thing, I agree with David. Developers have brought a lot of good things. Without them, you wouldn't have the house you're sitting in. We all moved here for the same reason. We wanted quiet, we wanted good schools, we wanted everything. But so did everybody else that moved here. I agree with the gentleman that spoke. Anybody that has raw land should not be taxed on it because of being forced to sell at a much lower rate than they can get later in life. And that's not fair for the property owner, because there are people with deep pockets that are gonna buy low and sell high. That's just the way the market works. There's nothing wrong with it. It just, it's just the way it works. And we need to also, as well as work with the other towns in our area, we need to work with these developers. Let them come, give them space to talk about what is, what is it they want, they're thinking about bringing. Let them pick your brains long before it gets to this stage. So, by the time it gets to the stage of any city council in this county, everybody's got a good working idea of what's gonna go there, and the majority of people understand it. Every working unit in the county understands, from, from education to, eh, forget DOT, they ain't worth a. And we're just gonna have to all fall in potholes for the rest of our lives. But from everything that the county has control over, work together with the towns, with the developers, and a vision for each town to lift up each one's strengths, because growth is inevitable, it's going to happen. And again, you know, we, we were elected to represent the people, and sometimes the people, too, are a developer, so we have to give them a fair hearing. We have to give them their voice. We can't yell at them, we can't call them names. They're here to build a product, they're here to make money, we all know that. You're here to state you're for or against something. And I want to say, before Mr. McIntyre takes the microphone, I wanna thank everyone here for being probably the most civil group during the, one of the most controversial issue to ever sit in this, in the room, and keep it nice, keep it quiet, and be civil. So, you, you all deserve to pat each other on the shoulder for that. So, just my two cents to it, I don't get a vote, but just try to keep it balanced out. Mr. McIntyre, the floor is yours.
One second, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Head, do you have anything you wanna add before I speak, sir? All right. Just one, one thing I wanna point out. So, first of all, thank you very much for coming tonight. I do wanna point out one thing. There was a comment that was made, directed at the planning staff being tight with the developer. I didn't like that comment. I am gonna speak up about our planning staff. When it, doesn't matter who comes to town, they are gonna treat you with respect and offer you great service, because the staff at Indian Trail, the town of Indian Trail, they are the ones that meets the public. Whether it's the developer, or whether it's you coming in, talking about taxes, they are the ones that are gonna meet you, and they are gonna treat you with the utmost respect and give you the best service. So, the comment about being tight with the, the planning department, being tight with the developer, I take offense to that. I'm just gonna be very honest. We love our staff, they do a wonderful job, and I'm gonna stand behind them, because they work with integrity. Everything that they ask them to do, they do. Most times, people don't come to the meetings because things are running well within the town. We do listen to all your comments that you've made, we take them, we process them, we ask ourselves questions. And just like many of you who live here, I also moved to Indian Trail, and the house that I'm living in right now was once a strawberry field. That's where, that's where I was. And there were people who may have been opposed to the project that I, the neighborhood that I'm living in, but I still got to live here. So, these are things that we do take into consideration. When I hear things about the density, it's too much. I also believe in dialogue. If you feel it's too much, there's nothing wrong in picking up the phone or having a dialogue with the developer and saying, here's what I think, here's what I would recommend that you do, give a suggestion. If we talk to each other and not at each other, I think we can achieve a lot of good things. So, I do appreciate all of you coming tonight and speaking, but I wanted to take up for our planning staff, because being honest with you, they do work hard. And especially now, with all the projects that are coming in, trying to do this through the pandemic, they've done a wonderful job. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
I'm just gonna echo what Marcus just said, because I was, before I ran for office, I was on the planning board.
Is your mic on?
Can you hear me now? Yes. All right, I'll talk loud. Can you hear me now? All right. Before I was on the council, elected to the council, I was on the planning board for about two years. I can tell you, our planning department is A1, okay? So, I agree with Marcus. This is not, you know, kinda here trying to figure out how to balance everything, all right? You know, we still need growth, and if anybody's ever heard me, you know I grew up in a town that's really no longer, okay? It, it doesn't have growth. In fact, there's more houses being torn down. So, I'm always looking, trying to look at both sides. I think it's already been said several times, but we gotta balance it. And I think we're somewhat out of balance in a couple of areas, so we gotta look at that. Again, I appreciate everybody coming. I really appreciate everybody being civil, and let's go for a vote.
Real quickly, before you vote, it is, it's a really, it is actually a nice-looking project. And I'm gonna echo what Mr. McIntyre said. Remember, the town staff only follows the rules set forth by the councils you elect and the ordinances they put in place. So, whether it be getting involved on a planning board, or writing, or running for office, that's who sets your rules, and the staff does what's within scope of what's been set for a town plan and their UDO. And be involved. All right, council, there's no further discussion, there's two motions that are on the table.
Request to be recognized?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the statement of consistency, excuse me?
Motion, you want it only, you want to only approve, someone that's gonna, or how we can, how you wanna do this?
You can deny the statement of consistency, and so the vote can be for denial if that's-
A statement of consistency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarification. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Morse.
No problem. I'd like to make a motion to deny the statement of consistency as read into the record for CZ 2019-0087 by staff on June 22nd, 2021.
I do believe we need a reason.
You need a reason.
What are the reasons he can give?
It does not comply with the land use map.
Does not comply with the land use map.
Thank you, Mr. Morse, that was ingenious. Mr. Morse has made a motion to deny the statement of consistency based on the land use map. By show of hands, all in favor of denying the consistency finding. Those opposed to the consistency finding. Let the record stand that the motion is, the motion is passed to deny the consistency findings based off the land use map. Four to one with Mr. McIntyre opposing. What happens now? I've never been in this situation.
So, we are going to move to deny the rezoning request.
I'd like to follow up that first motion with the second one, to deny the rezoning request CZ 2019-0087, ordinance 0210622-360.
Okay, Mr. Morse has made the motion to deny this, deny the project based off of all he's, he's read already. By show of hands, all in favor of denial. Let the record show, that was unanimous. Rezoning is denied, and I call for a five-minute recess. If I can have everyone's attention, if you're staying, take your seats, please be quiet. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. That brings us... Everyone's a comedian, Todd. Thank you. You know, Todd, you can always go home and let Little Joe sit there. That brings us to Old Business, Old Monroe Road Property Uses and Easements. Mr. McLaurin?
Can everybody hear me? There you go. All right. Before you, you have a slide of some property that the town owns across from Radiator Specialty Road, right in that area. It's about 11 acres. And we brought it up to you last spring when we were talking about possible park locations. We did some research. And of that 11 acres, we found that we had some floodplains, right-of-way, or power line easements, and just a whole number of issues. We've also, this particular property is landlocked. So the question came to staff as to what is the best use of this property? And I'm gonna give you the punchline. The best use of this property right now is parkland, okay? Because only about three of the 11 acres is buildable. We would need to rezone it. Right now, I think it's zoned multifamily. It's got multifamily on one side, single family on the other. We would have to rezone it to light industrial if we would say move it to, if we would move the public works facility there. With three acres, within just a few years, the public works facility would be coming back to you to do some more work and need some more help. We also have a situation here where you have a developer. I think it's, Todd, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you got a developer right here. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. And council, if you don't remember or not, they came in a few years ago. It's called Steepleton. It was a one-access subdivision with, I wanna say 70-something lots. Very odd, but they basically got rejected because of the one entrance. And they had no way of connecting a second entrance to the site.
And so he has approached us to see if we would be willing to work with him to give him an easement across our property so that he could get to Old Monroe Road. If we would do that, then we would then have access to Old Monroe Road. If you tried to sell it, given the limitations of the property, I don't think you would get what you would want out of it. So my recommendation to you is twofold. One is that we continue to look at that as potential park property and that we also enter into discussions with the developer to allow some sort of easement which could go across our property. And he would build the road and we would have access to Old Monroe Road. And that would be my thoughts. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So remind me to never come and negotiate with you, just so you know. The two portions at the bottom, they're not in question, right?
In terms of, in questions of what?
In terms of acquisition, park, whatever. I mean, like, that little piece there doesn't look like we can really do anything with it. It's just basically, let's plant some trees on it. That's essentially what we can do, right?
Yeah, we're very limited there. We would get a park professional that would tell us what we could do to make the best use of that land.
All right, but then, sorry, for the purposes of asking, this piece we can do nothing with?
Pretty much.
This piece here, very limited, right?
Right.
What size is this, roughly, an acre, roughly? Two acres? All right, and there's a floodplain on the edge there, something. So we would give him access from up here for his ruin? And that's all, we give him the easement? And that's all he would do, really, is just build the ruin and that's it?
Not necessarily. We would, in exchange for that easement, we would identify what we feel like we need for the town and have that as part of the negotiation.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay? Thank you.
How big is that, again, Mike? The largest portion of that land?
Adam, come on up, 'cause you've worked on it more than anybody else.
So the larger one is about six acres total. But when you look at, start looking at, there's a purple line that you really can't see up there on the screen. That's the high-tension, high-test power lines that do power has. So that limits what you can do in the range of building. You can do things underneath them. They just have to have continuous access through that area.
Yeah.
So you could build a field, you know what I mean? That they can, you'd have to give them access around, but you could have a green field or something like that underneath there. And then all the floodplain that you can see in blue there, you can't build in any of that space. There also is, you see?
Yeah.
This right here? This, there's a right-of-way right down through here that is, we took away from being a roadway right-of-way. A couple of years ago, it was Faith Church Road right-of-way. It's still a right-of-way there that can be used for greenways or connections or things like that. So you can, through a greenway, or even just a sidewalk or something like that, you could connect this top parcel through that existing easement down to this bottom parcel. So that you do have the ability to get down to that bottom parcel pretty easy through projects.
And, yeah, and that future greenway is called Price Mill Creek. It is on the books, but we've, as far as CRTPO and stuff, hasn't been approved as far as funding. But yes, that's part of the Carolina Future Threat Trails that will connect Old Monroe's 10-foot multi-use path.
I have one additional question.
Yes, sir.
The person that is asking for the easement, you said, has...
Call it a right-of-way, 'cause that's what it's gonna be, right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
We would make it right-of-way.
Is Steepleton development that is not approved?
That's correct.
Okay, so essentially, if we give them the right-of-way...
They would want to come, yeah, they would come to workshop...
They would come to workshop and go through that process.
And discuss this, yes.
Yes. And we would engage council in terms of what's being proposed and to get your feedback. The other thing I'll mention is if you use this as parkland, if you look at the town, we've got Crooked Creek on the north side. You have, in the center part of town, you have Chestnut Park. The only park that we have talked about to any great degree is you've got Holly Park, which is about an acre across from Sun Valley. But this could put you a park down on the south part of Indian Trail.
Technically, that's fairly close to Stallings, too, is it not? Or...
No.
No. Yes, near the Second ABC Store.
Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
They could stumble into the park and run.
No drinking in the park.
Yeah, no drinking in the park.
I would be for going ahead and doing the easement and rezoning it for parkland instead of just letting it sit there and be a mosquito farm. I mean, you know.
Thank you.
I would support that as well.
Do you need a vote, or do you just need a consensus?
Consensus.
I think consensus is fine for right now.
Does the town have any property that is dedicated to wilderness, wildlife?
Not that I'm aware of. Our park and recreation system is maybe five years old. And we focused on active recreation. We've got some passive recreation. We want to do more, certainly with the greenways and things like that. Todd, if I'm missing something, Adam, Brandy, please speak up.
We don't have anything right now. But if you think about, we took tours out of Crooked Creek. Think about the percentage of Crooked Creek that's in the floodplain or is in, you know, wetland area. And that's where I'm talking about passive recreation. A lot of that land, we won't ever build on, probably.
Yep.
And when you do have the floodplains and things like that, you'll start to see wildlife congregate. I know I use the Mallard Creek Greenway a lot. And there's wetlands there. And you'll see herrings and all kind of stuff. I was on a run one time and I had a deer run out in front of me.
Yeah, I just, I think that sometimes we get, our residents, including myself, get a little upset about all of the development going on and at the expense of the habitat. But if there was some way that we could address maybe the habitat and leaving some natural areas, it would be more conducive to high density in some areas that supported that.
I think Brandy may have a comment.
We do have tree save and open space requirements for each of the developments. And then you'll see, a lot of the developments that come, they do have a good bit of floodplain, as Adam was speaking to.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
For me, anyway. How many acres is that? How many usable acres do you think you could, is it if it's the floodplain and the...
So total?
And is it direct, would that be direct access to Monroe Road? I mean, no?
So the, that's why they were talking about the right-of-way. So this property area right here, that's Steepleton. There is another development going on right here, right now. That's Town Homes, that's...
Sagecroft.
Sagecroft? So Sagecroft built, or is building a road into Sagecroft. Steepleton would have to come somehow and connect to that road to get out. That's what they'd be wanting to do. So you're gonna be left with about three-ish acres up here that's developable outside of the floodplain. And then, like I said, this is two back here. Total, the town has 11 acres here or first right of refusal to one other parcel. I forget exactly which one it is due to the Sagecroft litigation lawsuit that went on 12-ish years ago. That's how the town acquired this group of parcels.
I mean, there's parking there. The only reason I'm thinking that, if you've got three acres and you had to have parking there, how much, how many, how much land would you have for a park?
It is raw land right now. If you went out there and looked at it right now...
So you can use the floodplain for parking? Is that what you're saying?
You can, but it would be costly.
Yeah.
A boat.
Well, you gotta go through the permitting process. It's kinda costly.
I'm just thinking, if you got three acres there and you had to park, you used an acre.
So we're talking about three acres of... When I say three acres, I mean three acres buildable for buildings and big things. If you are doing...
But you can't build a park, you can't build a park on floodplain.
You can't build a baseball field or a soccer field, but you could build an open green space in the floodplain. It's gonna get wet when it rains. Right, but it's, you can still, you can't change the elevation in the floodplain.
But you can have something like this golf, like a crooked, like a crooked...
David, if you go to, if you know where Kirk Field is, right at Mallard Creek and Highway 29, that whole area there is a floodplain. And they use it for soccer play and things like that.
You can use it for soccer play, but you can't build a soccer field on it. Is that my understanding?
You can't change the vertical elevation. So you can, Todd, correct me if I say this wrong. You can grade, but you can't change the elevation. So I can smooth out the land to make it flat, but I can't change the vertical elevation.
Correct. And if you do, you can, but then you have to do a downstream analysis to see if you have impacted somebody further down for the addition of the elevation. So it can't be done, but you just gotta go through the process.
Just aside, I think they're called the BB&amp;T soccer fields that are in Winston-Salem on the way. Those are all on floodplains. And there's, it's a gigantic soccer field. So I know somehow it can, I don't know the details, but it's been done several times in North Carolina.
So that's what you're saying. You can't change the height, but you can change the...
Mr. Mayor, I think we got our marching orders on this one. So we'll get started on it.
Mr. McLaurin? Mr. McLaurin? Kathy, this way. Mr. Barber said something about rezoning. And was there any consensus for rezoning it to parkland?
I recommend that we don't do anything until we find out what's happening around it. And we can take care of all those issues when, in the event that a developer does reach out to the town, we can sort of combine the process into one. So I don't recommend that we do anything at this point.
So the consensus is just to grant an easement?
Look into it.
Yeah, what I heard, Mr. Mayor and members of council, is one, is the consensus is we want to look at this land as parkland, item number one. Item number two is to have discussions with the developer that has reached out to us to discuss having a right-of-way. But associated with that is what kind of pieces of the puzzle will be added as part of an acquisition of a right-of-way? Okay?
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. That brings us to the solid waste RFP update.
Y'all get to hear it from me again.
Oh, wow. Luckily, it's the last time.
That's right, it's the last time tonight, right?
Yeah.
So we spoke some time ago and we said that we would be going out for an RFP for solid waste, even while we're doing some other things. So this is kind of a timeline that we've laid out for that solid waste RFP process. You see a very large gap when you get to the bottom of this. You see from October of 18 to 8/1 of 21. That is because that is when our existing contract ends. And that, it takes about eight months, we're hearing, from the vendors in this realm for them to get up and running for a contract our size. So it may seem like we're starting very early in this process, but we're actually right on target for how long it'll take. So we have about two months built in here for the contractors to have the bid, to have the RFP, for them to look through it. During that time, we'd have a mandatory pre-bid meeting where they would then come in and ask questions of what our RFP is or what we are looking for when we get, if we get to the end of this process with one of them. Bids would come back. We would then come to council one time for just information. We would just bring you what had happened, what they had said to us. And then we'll come back, that next council meeting. And these dates could fluctuate, but that next council meeting for approval. Nothing else. Just wanted y'all to kind of have an idea of where we were headed. Thank you. If you have any questions, let us know.
CDBG agreement. Say that real fast.
Before we do that, just one comment to our solid waste. We will probably need to have a closed session two weeks from now to give you the latest discussions that Adam and I are having with the current vendor. Just FYI for that, Kathy. Okay? You're good with that? Okay. We're meeting with them on the 8th of July. I think most people may know about CDBG. If not, I can give you an explanation. But bottom line is the county is an entitlement county because of their size. And what that means is they get a certain amount of money to do CDBG work. And it can cover a variety of things. If we approve this cooperative agreement, we are basically coming under the umbrella of the county. Every community in Indian Trail is a member of this agreement, with the exception of Marvin in Unionville. What does that mean for us? That means if we identify a project that may qualify for CDBG funding, instead of us having to compete statewide, what we do is we compete within the other projects submitted within the county. If we're funded, the county pretty much administers the grant. And personally, I think it's a no-brainer and we need to authorize the manager and/or the mayor to sign off. And the town attorney has reviewed it and she is comfortable with it. I just need a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me any, what type of projects have been approved in Union County under this CDBG?
Some of the things they could do is housing, for example. If you've got some substandard housing, I've seen CDBG money used to go improve that. If you've got an area where the income is lower than certain ranges, I've seen CDBG money used to go in there and improve the streets, sidewalks, things like that. I talked to Patrick Nylan, the Assistant County Manager. One of the things he told me is, I think they have provided money to Turning Point, Common Heart, things like that. So there's a whole variety of things that qualify. But the grant, the money is awarded on a competitive basis. And then sometimes there are some matching requirements.
Are there, do you have any examples of whether CDBG has been used here in Union County?
Well, like I mentioned, you know, they've provided money to Turning Point and Common Heart. They have also, I think, used some money to help people with well water that has arsenic in their well water. I think they have used money on water and various water and sewer programs. And I think they've done sidewalk programs. I'm thinking, I know there's one in Waxaw that they did. I guess it's probably on the east side. And so those are some of the things that's been done in Union County.
Mr. McLaurin.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
I wanted to just give you another example. Sorry. Out at Hemby Bridge Elementary, through the county and that same program, they were able to build some ADA pathways for people with disabilities to get out to the field. So that's one of the projects that was done in Indian Trail.
Right. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
So I'm just going to be frank. Is this low-income housing bringing it to Indian Trail through the CDBG working with Union County?
Not necessarily, no, sir. It's more of if you've got a poor area of town, of trying to use money to rehab those areas of town.
Have we identified those areas in our town that?
I can think of one area that probably qualifies right offhand, but I haven't done the income search to verify that. I think you, I think you've got some areas in the less prosperous parts of town that have some old infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And so the idea is to bring things up. And the way I understand it from Mr. Nylan is that the town basically applies for the grant. It's not like the county coming down telling us, you will apply for this grant. So I think the control is in your hands.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea how much hood housing we might have here in town?
When you say hood housing, tell me what you're talking about.
You know, but anyway, the low-income qualification.
You know, I don't know exactly. And generally, I've seen this used more in neighborhoods. And Brandy may be able to talk about this in greater detail. But a lot of times I've seen in my career where you don't have just one poor person living in a house. It's generally a neighborhood. And so what you try to do is you try to build the infrastructure of that neighborhood up. I have seen when I was at COG, their planning department did CDBG work, and there were a lot of times housing in some neighborhoods or what we call target areas were substandard, no insulation, leaking windows, you know, bad doors. And they use that money to go in there and help those folks.
I was wondering why Marvin and Unionville, maybe they don't have any identified type areas and just wondering if we did. That was kind of the question. If they didn't, they're maybe, you know, so.
And I'm looking over at Brandy because she's the best planning director, and so I'm sure she's got.
You're into an agreement, you know, kind of like, well, do we really have a need to do it?
And before I turn it over to Brandy, there may be years that we don't even submit a grant application. You're not required to submit a grant application. And if we sign on with the county, because you have more population and more cities, the county will receive more money, which means that then if we have a good project, chances of being funded are increased.
So just quickly, I want to speak to this. In one of my previous roles, I was CDBG administrator. What, it was in a more rural area in North Carolina. And basically, CDBG funds are designated through census tracts. We do not have census tracts here that would qualify. That's a good thing. But what you would have to do is you would have to go a little labor-intensive and go house by house and get income verifications. So just to be honest with you, the chance of us having a project is probably slim, but I think that it's a good thing for Union County for us to participate. And if we are entitlement, so if we don't participate with the county, we're kind of at it alone, and I think that our chances are reduced even greater if we were to try to submit an application solo and not along with the county. Thank you.
Just one question. This is not just for low-income housing. There are other things that we could do that may affect or may assist people affected in Indian Trail. For instance, I think you mentioned well water. Not everybody in Indian Trail is on the county's water system, correct?
That's correct.
And this doesn't build, this is not designed to build low-income housing or hood housing. It's designed to help those folks that meet that income criteria.
All right, thank you.
And, you know, if y'all do agree to sign on with the county, you know, it's a multi-year agreement, I would have the county staff meet with the planning staff, probably late summer, early fall, to see if there's any projects that might, you know, be considered for funding. Because what they do is they do this in the spring and then the new project starts July 1st. They're not asking for any money from the town, but it is an opportunity to leverage funds and work, as the mayor said, with our surrounding area.
So you would need a motion?
We would need a motion and a vote to authorize entering into this agreement.
We're talking about a grant, right? Is that what we're talking about?
No, sir. It's only, it's only an agreement. There's no grant. It allows us to work with the county on CDBG. So if we have a project that we think might be eligible for funding, we could apply to the county who, because they are an entitlement county, they automatically get money. So.
So it wouldn't be any tax money out of a, I mean, so I really don't even know why we're so deep in this conversation if it's free, it's free money, correct? I mean, we're getting what I call free money to help people or to help bad situations, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't really know why we're indulging.
I'll make, Mr. McLaurin, I guess Mr. Coon is saying, let's wrap it up. I'll make the motion if nobody has any questions. No questions? All right.
No, they answered all the questions, so that was the important part. That's why we're deep in this discussion, Mr. Coon.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the CDBG agreement dated 6/22/2021.
McIntyre's made the motion to approve the CDBG? Whatever. I can't say that real fast. My show of hands, all in favor. The record show that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Bring us the new business, Indian Trail Business Park. Mr. McLaurin, don't move.
Okay, I will not. We have with us Ms. Richardson, and you have two emails in your file, or two files in your agenda package, I'm sorry. The bottom line is we have a stormwater utility. And when it was set up, we had been billing the, I guess, Austin Printing for the whole Indian Trail Business Park condominium association. So for 10 years or so, he has been paying that bill. It comes in, he writes a check, we take the money, we deposit it, and life's good. Well, it recently came to light that we shouldn't have done that. It should have been billed, I think, on a per parcel basis. Is that right, Todd? And once, once it was brought to our attention, Chestnut Consulting LLC reached out to us to find out, how do we fix this? The total errors in rebilling was about 13,000. I will tell you upfront that, you know, the school of government says that, well, I'll get to that in just a minute. So anyway, Chestnut Consulting LLC went back and collected the money of people that were still within the condominium, and I guess refunded to Mr. Austin. However, as you might imagine, over the course of 10 years, there were a number of businesses that left and were nowhere to be found. So they met with us probably a couple of months ago, wanting us to refund, you know, what had been billed in error. We checked both with the school of government and the town attorney, and both said that, and I've shared this with Ms. Richardson, that the town has no legal obligation to refund that money. Under the stormwater ordinance, I do have in my power, if there is a mistake billing, I can go back one year, and we've done that. I think we have shared this with Ms. Richardson. We also shared with her that if she wanted to appeal to the council, she certainly could. And she is here tonight, so we need a decision on what you would like to do.
We need a dollar amount.
The dollar amount, I think it's $5,915.46. If you do approve it, we would ask, let's see, wait a minute. We would ask that they sign a waiver of any future claims against the town. Town attorney may have a couple of comments.
I think you covered it. The town's legal liabilities for one-year payment, and we have paid that back, so this is certainly council's decision, which would, but again, no legal obligation. And we would want for sure that the payment would go directly to the person who paid, not to the HOA. I'm sorry, COA.
So council, basically, someone wrote a check for a complex they shouldn't have been writing. They were billed for it, they came in, were under no obligation to pay. It would be a gesture of goodwill and a lesson learned for both the person that wrote the check and the town to make sure billing's correct in the future. And the rest is in your hands if there's no questions.
I'd like to make a motion quick.
Go ahead.
Unless if there's questions.
Look, anybody have a question?
Yep. I make a motion to approve refunding the $5,915.46 to Bart Austin, Austin Printing, to reimburse for overpayment of stormwater fees that were erroneously billed, and we apologize.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to make.
I thought you said Austin Printing had been paid and repaying it to someone else. Is that a correct motion?
We should pay it. Let me check my letter here. I think we would be reimbursing Austin Printing, Ms. Richardson, is that correct? My mistake, Austin Printing.
My motion was correct.
Thank you. Thanks for catching that, Todd. Appreciate that.
I'd pat you on the shoulder for that, but I can't, well, I guess. Okay? I'd pat you on the shoulder for that, but I can't.
I'll give you a hand.
All right. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve the refund. By show of hands, all in favor? The record show that was unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to board and committee appointments.
And Mr. Mayor, with your consent and the board's consent, I will turn this over to Kathy to kind of walk us through it. You and Kathy can.
Kathy, can I take the lead on that?
Can handle that.
Thank you. All right, we have one, two, three, four separate that have open seats. We're going to do them one at a time, so we can have clarity for it, please. We have the board, because there's more than one applicant for seats. Board of Adjustment, we have seat one. You see your term expiration, new term expiration, and seat number four to be filled. Correct? And there are two applicants?
There are.
For two seats.
There are two seats and two applicants.
Okay, council? Board of Adjustment, if you want to make a motion for, and for?
I'll make a motion, sir.
Okay.
Board of Adjustments, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Jeanette Jeanie Lucas to seat one.
Okay.
On the Board of Adjustment, effective July 1, 2021, with a term ending June 30 of 2024. Or should I?
That's fine, that's fine. Just seat, just seat one's enough, because the information's written. And go ahead, if you want to do, you can do each board.
And then I'll make another motion.
Make this, keep it in the same motion, same motion.
Same motion, and I'll include for seat four, Mr. Clarence Also-Brooks.
Okay.
With a term of July 1, 2021, June 30 of 2024.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion for Ms. Lucas to seat one of the Board of Adjustment and Mr. Also-Brooks to seat four of the Board of Adjustment. If there's no questions, by show of hands, all in favor?
Sorry, yes, sorry.
Record show that was.
Mr. Also-Brooks is sitting in the back, back there. Stand up if you would. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. I remembered you from the speaking.
That brings us to Park, the Parks Committee. There's seat three with an expiration of the current seat of 6/30/2021 and a new term expiring 6/30/2024. There is one, two, three applicants for the Park Committee.
May I clarify? First preference does not mean anybody's first preference. It means she submitted an application that had first preference and a second preference. She was interested in the parks and rec, and if she wasn't elected, she, or appointed, she wanted to be in the planning board.
Thank you, Kathy.
And Brian Olin's already on there. His term's expiring, right?
He is the incumbent, yes.
Council?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to put Ms. Miller, Mr. Olin, and?
There's one seat.
Only one seat. Oh, excuse me. Okay, my bad.
We haven't had this problem in a while.
Really? Okay. Then I'll come off that and, because I don't particularly know any of them. Does anybody have anybody they want to nominate?
Yeah, I'll nominate Ms. Christie. The first, first words come out of your mouth. Ms. Christie Miller for seat three, beginning term 7/1/2021, expiring 6/30/2024.
Mr. Morris has made the motion for Ms. Christie Miller for the Park Committee. By show of hands, all in favor? Looks like that was unanimous also. That brings us to planning. There's three seats available and one, two, three, four applicants. Okay. Council? This one, can we handle one at a time, please? If someone would like to recommend?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Ms. Natanya Walton to be seat one. Term beginning 7/1/2021, concluding 6/30/2024.
Okay. Mr. Morris has made the motion for Ms. Wiley for seat one on the planning board. All in favor? By show of hands. That would be unanimous. We need an appointment for seat five, anyone?
Jerry's on the roll, man.
Yeah, for seat, for seat five, I would like to recommend Mr. Travis Day.
Okay.
Term beginning on 7/1/2021, ending 6/30/2024.
Okay, Mr. Morris has made the recommendation for Mr. Day for seat number five. All in favor, by show of hands? That'd be unanimous. And seat number six, Mr. Morris?
Yeah, and I've seen this person at the Board of Adjustment hand think highly of her, Ms. Cynthia Wiley, to be nominated for seat six. Term beginning 7/1/2022, ending 6/30/2022.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morris has made the motion for Ms. Wiley for seat number six. By show of hands, all in favor? That would be also unanimous. Stormwater, we have, what does CM mean?
Councilmember?
Okay. Seat three, which is the councilmember only.
I'm going to make a nomination for that.
And Mr. Barber has expressed his interest in remaining where he is.
I am going to make a motion real quick.
Go ahead before he changes his mind.
I want to make a motion. I'm sorry. I want to make a motion that we nominate Mr. Todd Barber for seat three on the Stormwater Committee with a term expiration beginning 7/1, expiring 6/30, 7/1/2021, expiring 6/30/2024. Doing a good job.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion for Mr. Barber for the councilmember seat on the Stormwater Committee. Okay. By show of hands. Let that show the, for the record, it is four and a half yeses, so it's unanimous. And we have seat number six with, okay, three. Any recommendations?
Mr. Barber, can I do that?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to appoint Chris Rhode to seat number six on the Stormwater Committee, effective July 1, 2021, with a term ending of June 30 of 2024.
Mr. Barber's made the motion for Mr. Rhode on the Stormwater Committee, seat number six. By show of hand? That would be unanimous. Thank you, council. That went smoothly and easy for Kathy to write down.
Can I just say something real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Ms. Quinn's staff, I want to say this is a really good job that we had multiple candidates for the open positions on the various boards. So pretty good job by the staff in terms of reaching out to members of our community and also want to thank the people who have volunteered to serve on these boards within the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Indian Trail Road, street acceptance. Mr. Hedsinger. Hello, sir.
Hello, mayor, council. Head or night to discuss, we've been in negotiations with NC DOT for the last several months. We finally got to, to some terms that we could agree with. Basically, you know, the town is, or the staff is looking to, want to take over the Indian Trail Road for our complete street project, so we can obviously build it like we want to build it without having to succumb to NC DOT standards. If DOT is willing to do that. The DOT is, is willing to do that, but to move forward, they would like to take over maintenance in the future of the Chestnut Parkway Connector slash Extension Project, which being Phase Two and Phase Three. As you well aware, Phase Two is an NC DOT project, they are building, they're in right of way right now. The town is building Chestnut Parkway Phase Three, which is in right of way right now. But the, the only catch is, they, they do not want to take over the existing Chestnut Parkway at this current time, which I agree with, because we have, again, on-street parking down, out there that we desperately need, and we would have control over that for the next several years until they feel like they need to come back to ask for it, so we can have those discussions at a later date. So I came, come before you to ask you to approve the town to move forward in the process with DOT, to have DOT abandon the Indian Trail Road right of way, or maintenance easement, have they, they want to call it, and then the town would move forward with petitioning the DOT to take over the road. Any questions?
No questions? Council should be...
I do, I have a question. You know, the, with the $5 million we're contributing on Monday Road, we get the $2.5 million back, and it was going to be earmarked for Chestnut. How does that play into this new...
Well, it doesn't play into, I mean, we've, that's, that's kind of already a done deal, if you want to call it that, so there's no discussions as far as using that $2.5 for anything. That has not been part of the discussion at all. So, so we have control of what we can do with that money in the future. That's got nothing to do with the Parkway or anything else.
So the $2.5 million will be available still to the town?
Correct. Yeah, because you contributed the $5 million to that, to over the road. That's correct. I've heard, I've heard nothing different when it comes to that.
Kind of. Kind of...
Well, again, we don't have any plans of what we're going to use that $2.5 million for currently.
My concern is it's still there, that we don't take that $2.5 million off the table, because there's plenty of needs out here in Indian Trail for roads.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't get the $2.5 million if we don't obviously pay the $5 million, so we have to pay the $5 million first before we get...
We're doing that.
Well, we haven't done that yet, but we're going, we're planning on doing it, yes.
Once it's paid and complete, then the money comes available.
Yeah.
Agreed. I, I don't trust DOT for nothing.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
And always having the upper hand in any negotiations. I mean, we've got plenty of our money.
Well, they can't go any more bankrupt than they already are.
So it's...
Well, let me rescind that, as they can.
Sorry, two different, two different...
Yeah, it is, it is.
It is two different things.
It's a valid question, yes.
If there's no other further discussion on it, we'll need a motion for that.
I want to make a motion to approve accepting Indian Trail Road as a town-owned road and to direct staff to begin formal accept, acceptance process with NC DOT.
Wonderfully set. Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to accept Indian Trail Road. If I show hands, all in favor? Let that show, record show that was unanimous. Next is item D, amended CPO number 021622, Indian Trail Complete Street. Mr. Hunsinger?
Again, we've, this project's been out there for a while. I kind of gave you a, a history in the memo of where we're at and why it's taken so long, but just to kind of summarize, you know, the, the Complete Street Project, as you remember, was a pedestrian project. That's how it was, that's why it's EB, as far as what that destination's for, it's not a transportation project. The CRTPO had discretionary funds that we went after several years back, that we could apply for any kind of project. And so we did, we applied for the intersection improvements, the downtown main intersection, and we were accepted with that funding. So then I engaged the DOT for it to make sense, because it's in the same proximity of the Complete Street Project, to combine the projects. And so we had two destinations as far as still numbers, and so now we've finally, it took a year, but we finally got that process moving forward, and FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration, approved that combined, combining those two projects. And so now we have a fully fledged transportation project to construct, and so due to that combination, we have to update our CIP ordinance to reflect that additional funds. And so that's what the motion's for. Thanks.
Any questions? All right, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the amended capital project ordinance number 021, is that O or zero?
It's an O, but it's...
It's O210622-361, reflecting additional funding received for the Indian Trail Complete Street Project.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve. All in favor, if I show hands? That was passed unanimously. That brings us to the next amended CPO, 0210662361, budget amendment, $4,139,162.
Now that you've approved amending the CIP ordinance, we have to, obviously, as Finance Department has to update their books, if you want to call it that, so they need to do it a budget amendment to reflect the approval of the CIP ordinance, and that's what this is for.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment to allocate funds to the Indian Trail Road Complete Street Project with additional CRTPO funding and local matching in the amount of $4,139,162.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve. If I show hands, all in favor? Record show that was unanimous. In favor? That brings us to First Avenue Street Acceptance. Mr. Hunsinger?
As you are aware, we are wrapping up Phase One of First Avenue Stormwater Improvements, and we are currently in design with 90% plans for Phase Two. So this project is going to be bitted out and hopefully in the next 30, 60 days. And so as a staff, we feel that we need to go ahead and take over First Avenue. It is a already platted subdivision, it was called Green Meadows back in the early 2000s. It was platted, first, second, third. We own second and third, and First Avenue obviously has been private for so many years. So we feel like we need to take it over, it's a 60-foot platted right of way. So that's what the motion's for, is go ahead and take that road over, because we are going to do roadway improvements on that project to upgrade the road to a, more of a town standard.
Any questions?
Why, yeah, just one, why would somebody oppose that, that being added to the streets? I think I saw in the packet, there was one that was opposed to this, one of those.
Oh, it was, it was, I'm sorry.
You know who this person was speaking about?
This was a part of your manager's report. We had the public meeting for Phase Two's, First Avenue Phase Two Project. We did a public meeting, and one person was opposed to the project. They just, unfortunately, the drainage system they have right now doesn't drain, and it actually catches the, the pond that's draining to it. And so it is a mess right now, unfortunately, and so this Phase Two will fix that, but I, they can't see the, I don't think they can see the full picture in the future, and they're just tired of dealing with us, and so they, they don't want the project.
Well, I'm sure you can appreciate there's always one person that gives you...
They just, yeah, nevermind.
I was there and pointed the email. Anyway, that's it.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. McIntyre.
I'm on the roll here, to approve accepting First Avenue, which is the Green Meadows subdivision as a town-owned road.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to take over First Avenue. All in favor? If I show hands, that would be unanimous. And that brings us to Poplar Glen Stormwater Improvement Contract, WK Dixon, Inc., $84,000. Mr. Hunsinger?
Yes, we went through the RFP process for this design, and went through the process, selected this firm, went through negotiations with this firm. We feel this is acceptable cost due to the schedule of the project. We will be dealing with the waters of the US, and we have to deal with FEMA as well. And so during that process of having to mitigate within the waters of the US, it's going to take 11 months, and so that's the reason why the cost is, is as high as it is, so.
Any questions? Not, Mr. McIntyre?
I'm, I'm on the roll here, man.
Yeah, might as well.
Make motion to adopt the Poplar Glen Stormwater Improvement Contract, not to exceed $84,900.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve. If I show hands, all in favor? Okay, just making sure, that's unanimous.
Well done, Todd.
All right, thank you, council, mayor.
Uh, Mr. McLaurin? That's how you keep things moving?
I will.
See?
You notice that Hayden Kramer's not with us tonight, and that is because they welcomed a new son into the world on June 17th at 2:00, Emerson Edward Kramer. Young man, he weighed eight pounds and 15 ounces. Tell me that's not a big baby. 21.58 inches. The wife, Kelly, is doing well, and Emerson is in good hands because he has a big sister by the name of Laney, who is three years old, so we wish the family well. This is our last scheduled meeting for the fiscal year, and in my many years of doing this kind of work, I've always used this time of the year to, to reflect back over what's occurred over the last 12 months. And if you'll bear with me for just a few minutes, I want to run through quickly a list of things that, that you've accomplished. Some of the things I'll talk about were already in progress before I got here nine or 10 months ago, and a number of things were done kind of in the back office, because we have such a professional staff, simply the best, and that they're getting the business done, which allows you to get your work done. So you, you might remember where you were last year, this time we were right in the middle of a pandemic and trying to find a new manager. You had Raymond Allen at the, at the helm, a very fine individual, a gentleman I consider a close friend. You completed the UDO requirements in advance of the state mandated deadline of July 1st. Staff worked really hard on that. We have the comp plan that's in process, and that should be completed this fall. And after that, we want to take a look at the downtown plan and try to update that. You've just taken action to take over Indian Trail Road. We've partnered with the county in Typar to install a water line on Indian Trail Road, that's off the ground. Yeah, I thought you had a very successful budget process. We did some things that were unique. We spent some time looking at priorities, we did videos, we had two public hearings, actually, and no one spoke in favor or against, and you kept the tax rate static. We began a long-term capital planning process that we will pick up after July 1st and engage you in a multi-year planning process, and we'll be starting next year's budget probably late summer. I was especially proud of the audit, and for the first time in a long time, you actually got to receive a presentation from the auditor and have a chance to ask questions. We are putting out an RFP. The audit firm we have right now will complete this year's audit, so they'll be back with you at some point to tell you about this year that we're closing out. But we did do an RFP in the next month or so to, to look at getting a different auditor, just have a different set of eyes. We did bank resolutions, and we saved money that way. We were saddened to lose Ms. Howell, wonderful woman, but we were excited with, with Mr. Cohen coming back on the council. Sometimes he might regret that decision, but we're glad to have you, David. Thank you so much. I'll try to step it up. Mr. Mayor, we updated the Park and Rec master plan. We're updating the Muni code, and we're near completion with that. We're reestablishing some relationships and strengthening our relationship with the county. You've heard some of that tonight, we'll continue to do that. We updated the personnel regulations, we updated the job descriptions and the compensation plan, and thank you for supporting that board. Developed a new personnel evaluation system. This board, I think, was a leader in recognizing the Juneteenth holiday and participating in that. And we are using more video to get our story out, and you'll see some of that. And the other thing that I'll mention, as far as the last thing on the list, and staff will probably remind me tomorrow that I missed about three things, is we are having the staff to what I call cross-pollinization. So instead of working in silos, there's a likelihood that if we have a meeting with Adam, Brandy may be there, or Hayden may be there, because we realize that what we do in this business doesn't affect just one department. The staff certainly appreciate your support, I appreciate your support. You're a good board, it was demonstrated tonight, and you've got a very fine staff. You are blessed to have that staff, and you also have a darn good attorney. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay? Finally get to work. I just can't even do that.
One job, I have one job at these meetings. All right, Mr. Barber?
Well, first, well, first off, congratulations to the Kramers on the new baby. That's, that's excellent news, healthy baby. I'd like to thank the staff for everything, and the professionalism that's just eluded here, and I think with the crowd, I think the professionalism of the staff and the council here kind of keeps the crowd acting in a great way, in a good way. We didn't put whatnot out of control, all that, and the mayor runs a good meeting, thought you did a good job on that. I didn't hear what the person said about Brandy or planning, but I thought y'all were right, Mr. Head and Mr. McIntyre, in correcting that person to make sure that, you know, we don't need the staff being attacked, for sure. I mean, we, we got people here that do a great job and very professional. I do want to congratulate Wingate Baseball on winning the championship, and we do have NC State in the College World Series. I'm sure everybody's been noticing that, so. But last but not least is, I do want to wish the baby of the family, child number six, happy birthday today. He's 18, so for the first time in almost my entire adult life, I'm finally not legally responsible for any child. So, yeah, so I can say no to Bell Money now, anyway. So, anyway, I want to wish him a happy, he's a great kid, so he did, he does real well in school, so happy birthday, Leo. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Oh, boy, that's good, Todd, you give me lemons. Have you ever used Bell Money before?
Mostly on me.
That's great. I just want to thank everybody for coming, it was a good meeting tonight, mayor, you did a good job handling the meeting. Counselor, great job, and I do want to thank Brandy, Randy, you did a wonderful job, Todd, you did a good job, you, you handled the situation A1 number one, you're, you're just perfect. So with that being said, have a good night, and we'll see you next time. Thanks.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah, I'm appreciative to staff, of course, and members of the public that had the courage to come to before council and speak their minds and hearts. It's been a, it's, it's been a good, it's been a good run, and as y'all have seen in the paper recently, there's going to be a new council come this fall, and right now I don't plan on running, so just to make that public announcement now, so nobody else runs up to me and asks again. And I, I, I do respect the, the work of this council. We, we sometimes take a, a while to get to where we need to be, but at least all the questions are answered, and, and they're asked, and that's important to me. And hope you guys have a happy and safe 4th of July. Good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. I start a little tradition, where last time I started with a, just reading something, and I just want to read something again, and that's because we had a lot of people speak tonight. It was very good to hear everybody speak, whether they were for or against. It was good that people did come on and speak on something that, you know, they're passionate about. But through a brief conversation, you can learn more about what someone thinks on a topic than you might find out through the most well-designed survey questions. That's because people are more open and honest in a genuine conversation, where they feel safe sharing their thoughts and beliefs. I believe in that. There's a lot of, the power of conversation is, is great. Our staff has, our staff, doesn't matter what part of town, anybody who walks in, into the office, they are going to have to talk to that person in a very respectful, polite manner, professional manner, to get the job done. Indian Trail is very close to Charlotte, or proximity to Charlotte is a big thing, a big draw. Our low taxes, also a big draw. So I can tell you that, I, I'm going to make an educated guess that there's a lot of people who come in here with different projects to the staff, that pitching different ideas to the staff and asking information, and they have to treat every one of them with respect and so forth. So I, I want to just make people aware that the staff works hard, they do a really good job, and they come here, prepare us for the meetings, be available to the manager or us if we have questions. to the manager or us if we have questions. And while it's their job, they do it with a professional attitude, and they do it very well. We're very lucky to have, you know, Mike and his team running the town, so I'm very appreciative of that. Um, while we run for office, I know people may say things about us, and that's just part of it. You, you can't worry about that. If you wanna sit up there, you'll have to put on your big-boy pants. Um, but I wanna say that I was happy to hear the people talk and, and some people offering different ways of, of, or different ideas. Um, whether you agree with it or not, you still have to appreciate that they had the courage to come up and speak about something that they do care about. So council, great points, good questions, um, good attitude. I will say that, you know, being here, we've always been professional, always been respectful of each other, even if we disagree on things. But I'm hopeful that, um, as council member Morse is departing and others may depart, that, um, we do continue that sort of professionalism with the council, and that we all get along and continue moving this town forward. Thank you very much and have a pleasant evening.
Mr. Head?
Wow, um, you know, tonight was a very, very rewarding night, as I saw. We had a lot of people in here. Um, they all said their piece. And as, uh, Mike has said, you know, this has been a tremendous good year. I mean, we've, we've, we've accomplished a, a lot in the, uh, in the past year, and it's all due to staff. I mean, there's no, no denying it, that we have a very good staff, and I appreciate, um, each and every one of you. And, and Mike, I mean, you've come in just like, it was seamless. It really was. It was seamless. Came in, um, got along with everybody. I mean, it's been a, it's been a great year. Um, it, it's, uh, it's gonna be a, a one-year term for me as well. Um, I'm, I'm seventy-one. I, um, still have a lot of golf to play, so, um, if my wife will let me. Um, so I, I don't see myself running. Um, it's been a, a great year, and we still got plenty of time, yeah, but, uh, I did want council to know so that they can be looking for, for someone else. So, um, look, um, come the end of the year, um, I'll have tea time for anybody that wants to join. Um, and everybody drive home safe. Good evening.
Mayor Alvarez?
I was pretty much glad. I just wanted to mention this past weekend's, uh, Juneteenth celebration over at the, the park in Monroe and the joint effort between Monroe and Indian Trail at that, and plus the other celebrations that went on around the county. I had the pleasure of going. I had the pleasure of speaking and being amongst many, many wonderful people, and had a great time. It's one of the few times I've been places where there was no thickness in the air. Everybody got along, everybody had fun. It's a time to, it's, it's a small step in acknowledging errors of the past and taking baby steps forward and understanding that there's disparities across this nation still and people crying out, crying out for, for help, 'cause there's a big difference between equal and equality. Um, and rest assured, Indian Trail's taking big steps forward to ensure that all are equal and there's equality throughout this town hall. And much input, much work goes into this to ensure that, moving forward, all are treated correctly that walk through the doors of this town hall. And we're taking very, we're taking baby steps as a nation, and eventually there'll be a big light at the end of the tunnel. And I'm real, I was real proud and honored to be part of the celebration. I was real proud and honored to be part of this council that took steps to piggyback on council member McGee of Monroe's paid municipal holiday and acknowledging, and, uh, I'm glad it was acknowledged by the federal government. Maybe now we can move forward to real change that's needed in this country. And, uh, that being said, looking forward to the, uh, parade and all the, and the outdoors, and, uh, God bless everyone. Good night. Who wants to make a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, sir.
Just because Marcus made it, we should all deny it?
I'm on the roll, man.
Marcus, Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? By show of hands, that'd be unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Good night.